Will all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any of you have silent prayer and meditation and reflection here for a minute, please? Okay, thank you very much, be seated. We have the roll call, please?
Mr. Bekowski.
Here.
Mr. Bonnerati.
Here.
Mr. DiMarco.
Here.
Ms. Filiagi. Mr. Ftolas. Mr. Grisbeck.
Here.
Ms. Hallam. Mr. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Macy.
Here.
Ms. Nakareti Chapkus.
Here.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Here.
Mr. Palmasina.
Here.
Ms. Pritzio.
Here.
Mr. Walton.
Here.
President Katina. As of right now, we have 11 members present.
Thank you. Proclamations and certificates, all the proclamations will be right into the record. 1330224.
A proclamation recognizing Triangle Bar &amp; Grill's 90th anniversary, sponsored by Councilmember Nakareti Chapkus.
13303-24.
A proclamation commending Sebastian Tan upon the occasion of being selected as a RISE Global winner, sponsored by Councilmember Filiagi.
13304-24.
A proclamation recognizing Martha Mazarov on the occasion of her 100th birthday, sponsored by Councilmember Macy.
13305-24.
Certificates of recognition presented to the 2024 Shining Star Gala awardees, sponsored by Councilmember Filiagi.
Public comment on general items, on agenda?
On agenda, we have four. First up is Lisa Graves Marcucci. And please let the record reflect that Ms. Hallam is now present.
Is she here? No.
Next up would be Deb Smith.
Deb Smith here? No.
Third would be Jay Walker.
Not here.
And the fourth would be Matthew Mahalik.
Good evening, hi, and thank you for the opportunity for public comment. I'm Matt Mahalik, I'm the Executive Director of the Breathe Project, an organization dedicated to improving our region's air quality and quality of life, working with other 60 other organizations in the region. We applaud the hopeful appointment of new leaders to the Board of Health on the agenda tonight. I've spoken frequently over the years in front of this body about the need to reform the Board of Health so that it prioritizes the health of county residents, not special interests. It's our sincere hope that this new board, in concert with ACHD's new director, Dr. Van, can together improve our air quality and bring relief to many community members who've endured generations of toxic air pollution. Earlier this year, a group of residents from the Mon Valley released a report called Fine Particulate Matter Mortality in Allegheny County, PA, that soot pollution kills between 640 and 1,300 people each year in Allegheny County. Low-income communities had 33% higher proportions of these deaths than higher-income communities. Communities of color had 18% higher rates of these deaths than other communities. This is about two to four people each day on average. This situation highlights the need for immediate action from the new Board of Health. County Council should approve these new members who can commit to needed action to help our most impacted residents. In addition to this new board, County Council also needs to equip the Health Department with the resources needed to be successful. The Allegheny County Health Department needs to have its air program fully funded. The cost of the program should be carried by the significant polluters seeking pollution permits, not taxpayers. That is why Councilmembers should appoint, I'm sorry, should support proposed changes to Article 21 currently being debated in the Health and Human Services Committee. The proposed ordinance increases fees only on the operators of polluting facilities. In a time of budget crunches, these proposed permit fee increases lower the cost of government on taxpayers and instead focus it on the emitters. The largest emitters can afford the fee increases. U.S. Steel's 12-month trailing revenues are $16.3 billion. They pay each of their board members over $100,000 a year. They can afford to pay a $53,000 permit that lasts for five years, which means they're paying $10,600 per year. A vote for new board members and the permit fee increases, a vote in favor of saving lives, reducing diseases, restoring our homes, and initiating a more prosperous future. Let's save lives, reduce burdens on vulnerable people, and take action to make everyone proud of our county, and good luck to the new board members. Thank you.
Yeah. 13306-24. That's a motion to approve the minutes of the October 22, 2024 regular meeting of council.
Motion to approve.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing, no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Presentation of appointments. All of these evenings, appointments are referred to the Committee on Appointment Review. If there are no objections, I'd like the clerk to read them all now. Any objections? Hearing, none. Go ahead.
1322288-24. Approving the reappointment of Anita Pritzio to the Allegheny County Conservation District for a term to be effective through December 31, 2025, sponsored by the Chief Executive. 13289-24. Approving the reappointment of John Scott as a Farmer Director to the Allegheny County Conservation District for a term to be effective through December 31, 2028, sponsored by the Chief Executive. 13290-24. Approving the reappointment of Jason Singer as a Public Director to the Allegheny County Conservation District for a term to be effective through December 31, 2028, sponsored by the Chief Executive. 13291-24. Approving the appointment of Amy L. Klein as Farmer Director to the Allegheny County Conservation District for a term to be effective through December 31, 2028, sponsored by the Chief Executive. 13292-24. Approving the appointment of Emily, I'm going to butcher this, I apologize in advance, Zottkowitz, as a Public Director to the Allegheny County Conservation District for a term to be effective through December 31, 2027, sponsored by the Chief Executive. The next, actually, all the remaining appointments are to the Board of Health for terms effective through January 13, 2029, and sponsored by the Chief Executive. 13293-24 is the reappointment of Dr. Joilette Portlock. 13294-24 is the appointment of Dr. Dara Mendez. 13295-24 is the appointment of Dr. Elizabeth Cuevas. 13296-24 is the appointment of Dr. Graham Snyder. 13297-24 is the appointment of Kalud Salman. 13298-24 is the appointment of Dr. Margaret Larkin's Pettigrew. 13299-24 is the appointment of Dr. Michael Jonas. 13300-24 is the appointment of Laura Dagley. And 13301-24 is the appointment of Lisa Scales, all sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Thank you. I will now move on to any unfinished business, any unfinished business?
We have none.
Okay, liaison reports, any liaison reports this evening? Hearing, none. We want a new business ordinances and resolutions. 13307-24.
An ordinance to the County of Allegheny Commonwealth of Pennsylvania amending the Allegheny County Code of Ordinances, Article 210 of Division 1 entitled Assessment Standards and Practices, in order to establish a publicly searchable database of county reviews of the status of all properties qualifying for exemption from property taxation under the institutions of Purely Public Charity Act, sponsored by Councilmembers Hallam, Pritzio, Katina, and Grisbeck.
That will go to the Committee on Assessment Practices. 13308-24.
A resolution of the County Council of Allegheny County dissolving the Westport Tax Increment Financing District and authorizing related actions, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
That will go to Economic Development and Job Creation. I don't believe we have any new business for notification of contracts. 13309-24.
Communication summarizing approved executive actions for the month of October 2024.
Is there a motion to receive and file?
Motion.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. We'll now have public comment on general items. But before we begin, I'd like to make a brief statement. Good evening, everyone. I want to start out by thanking everyone for their interest in the 2025 budget process and for taking the time to be with us tonight. With that said, we have about almost 190 individuals signed up to speak this evening. At three minutes per speaker, that amounts to almost seven to nine hours of remarks, assuming if you use your whole time. This would last until 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning. Broadly speaking, the comments appear to fall into two separate categories. Those who are concerned about DHS funding and those who are concerned about a property tax increase. Please be respectful to all commenters, whether you happen to agree with their remarks or not. Heckling, booing, or making disparaging remarks will not be tolerated. And again, I stress that. I will have people removed, I've had people removed before, so please don't attack one another or councilmembers, or the Chief Executive for that matter. Please also note that cheering and applause also disrupt our proceedings and cause individuals who have yet to speak too late wait longer before getting their turn. Accordingly, these behaviors will also not be tolerated. Time limitations will also be strictly enforced in order to be fair to each and every one of you, because everyone obviously has a point to get across tonight. Lastly, you are not required to use your full three minutes of speaking time. I certainly don't want to cut anyone short, but if you can remake your remarks in under three minutes, I'm sure your audience, attendees, would appreciate it, and we would also appreciate it. Or you would likely merely express agreement with something another speaker has already said, you can do that entirely as well. Mr. Palmasina, I believe you have some remarks to make as well.
Yes, thank you, President Katina. Council has received a lot of telephone calls and emails about the county's executive proposed 2025 property tax increase and operating budget. Many of those have spoken about the services provided by our County Department of Human Services, which is perfectly understandable since these programs reach many of our most vulnerable populations. The majority of commenters have said that they want to preserve existing programs which are currently being provided in the 2024 operating budget with our current real estate tax rate. Formulating the 2025 budget is challenging because the county is running at a deficit of approximately $80 million in 2024. This deficit absolutely has to be fixed. Keeping existing county-funded programs while remedying the county's deficit is a responsible course of action, and it's something that I believe can be done. Not one member of council, to my knowledge, has suggested cutting any county employees, reducing or eliminating any program currently funded through county property taxes for 2025. It is my intention that the 2025 county budget will be greater than the 2024 budget, ensuring that no jobs are lost and our most vulnerable population is served. I look forward to working with my colleagues on council and the county executor. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Palmasina. At this point, we'll call up the first 10.
The first 10 are Lawrence McGaffin, Nicholas Harazy, John Kentsewitz, John Hanrahan, Benjamin Chisar, Joe Demming, Stephanie Eason, Joe Hladieck, Abby Ray Lacombe, and Julia Zavon.
For the record, if you could please state your name and address, also if you're a provider with the county or you work for a provider with the county, for our records. Thank you. Call them again, I'm sorry.
Number one is Lawrence McGaffin.
Lawrence McGaffin? Nope, not here.
Number two is Nicholas Harazy.
Not here.
Number three is John Kentsewitz.
He's here.
I got to go first. Great. John Kentsewitz, 828 Jancy Street, Pittsburgh, 15206. Change in the county executive's proposed budget to confront the jail staffing crisis. There is nothing in our county executive's proposed budget to confront the jail staffing crisis. She is aware, as we are aware, that many officers are working 80 hours in five days, an impossible schedule. Over 60% of our recruits from last year have already terminated employment because they are forced to work this impossible 80-hour schedule. The jail continues to lock down and violate the referendum at an alarming rate because of the staffing crisis. The forced overtime numbers are increasing instead of decreasing, yet the jail population continues to rise. Our officer's life expectancy is 61 years of age. Yours is 77. Essentially, our county executive has turned her back away from our officers and their families. In response, our officers and their families are rising up and saying this is wrong. In just four days, 191 signatures have been obtained, primarily from officers and their families, regarding a petition asking each county council member to vote against her proposed budget unless she includes a line item of $1 million for officers to be paid double time after they have worked 40-hour shift and two overtime shifts in a week. You have the petition in front of you. To continue to blame the staffing crisis on FMLA is beating a dead horse, and is wrong. The gold standard is ARC controllers audit from last year. We need 100 more officers. Recruiting more officers helps, but the recruitment is stymied because at least 60% of our new recruits leave employment primarily because of the, because of this 80-hour schedule and five days. What needs to happen is more of our current officers need to work more shifts. What the union is asking for is for officers to be paid double time only after they have worked their 40-hour shift and two overtime shifts, which I believe is very reasonable. If one digests the data-driven analysis of the health risks and life expectancies of our officers, officers will be dying sooner by days, months, and years by working these extra shifts. They need an incentive to make this critical decision affecting them and their families. If this incentive becomes part of the budget and more officers work more shifts, our new recruits will stay, as other staff will stay, and things will gradually improve. Lockdowns will decrease, staffing will increase, less forced overtime. I got seven seconds. Each of you have a choice. Do you want to be redeemers and bring life and a future to our office?
Thank you, John.
I had a powerful last statement, okay.
Next. Number four is John Hanrahan.
Not here.
Number five is Benjamin Chisar.
Benjamin Chisar, 125 Curry Hollow Road, Pittsburgh, PA, 15236. Want to remind everyone to get their flu shot. Want to remind everyone to support your local merchants on Small Business Saturday, November 30. Small business is the real backbone of this county. Like the record to reflect that the Health Department schedules public hearings at the same time as council meetings. It's another example of poor governance. Mr. President, I'm concerned about the Industrial Development Authority that issues bonds in this county, oversight of it, paying back the bonds and the receivers of the bonds and how they're selected, seems to be operating as a bank. Don't tell us there's no money for DHS investment seniors in parks when this county is issuing bonds left and right. I would like to take this moment to oppose the current lease renewal for the Pirates at PNC. We have the finest public facility in all of sports, the Pirates should pay more for it. I'd like to also take this opportunity to stand in solidarity with the United Steel Workers and their opposition of the sale of U.S. Steel to Nippon. I remind every man in this room that Japan is a treaty ally and you are obligated to protect it. U.S. Steel must remain American, even if they move to Arkansas. Now, on behalf of fixed-income seniors, small business owners, and folks in the working and middle class, I rise in opposition to a tax increase. High taxes are killing this Commonwealth. We should be cutting the millage. We can find $100 million in cost savings by cutting spending to core functions and bare minimum staffing to accomplish it. Democrats must be the party of good government. I rise in opposition to the executive and the manager's sky will fall pronouncements telling the citizens across the county, the sky will not fall. This is about choices, wants and needs. There's no justification when there's large deficits on a $3 billion budget, proposed a possible deficit of up to $150 million for next year, and then having high-paid professionals, home repair programs, economic development programs, private sector compensation packages, fancy benefits, homelessness programs, Main Street programs, small business grants that only go to 15 businesses, community development block grants for blight, housing, useless vendor contracts, after-school care, direct health care, food insecurity, and senior citizens. We cannot be a social safety net for 1.3 million citizens. County government must be limited and focused. There are more people who need a tax cut than get services from DHS. There are more parents who need a tax cut than get school care from the county. The best thing we can do is lower taxes. The best thing for economic development is free public transit, not $100 million in spending. Lower property income, gas, and business taxes. The best way to get people in affordable homes is to build more affordable homes, not $7.5 million in spending. We must reassess property, cut the millage rate, compartmentalize the major departments, replace revenues with redevelopment and taxes on sin. Please vote no on any millage increase. Thank you kindly, may God bless this county and all who call her home.
Thank you. Joe Demming? Not here. Stephanie?
Stephanie Eason, 559 South Braddock Avenue, Apartment 1, Pittsburgh, 15221.
Are you a provider?
A provider, yes.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Eason, Operations and Community Programs Manager of the Human Services Center Mon Valley located in Turtle Creek. I am here on behalf of the people we serve to urge you to support the 2.2 millage tax increase that supports a county budget that fully funds the Department of Human Services. Any reduction in funding will be catastrophic for all of our clients, workforce, and partner agencies, as this would greatly diminish service delivery to the greatest number of low-income youth and adults. As an organization dedicated to providing human services in 38 communities in the Mon Valley of Allegheny County with a population of over 244,000, we are deeply concerned about the potential impact of any county budget reductions on the availability of human services. In our footprint of service, Council Districts 8 and 9 have over 35,000 residents accessing services funded by the Department of Human Services, representing an investment of $150 million. We serve over 1,600 of those low-income residents. Every $1 of county funds spent on DHS leverages $4 in state money. Thanks to funding from DHS, the Human Services Center Mon Valley provides after-school and summer programming for over 100 first through fifth graders, enabling the majority of parents to work, assists 155 high school seniors from five Mon Valley school districts with completing high school, and 94% of them go on to college, a job, or the military, a pathway out of poverty. Provided volunteer income tax preparation to over 700 people returning over $800,000 this year to the local economy. We've also provided financial literacy seminars for over 400 people every year, and a self-sufficiency service for dozens of adults to help them reach a career path out of poverty. Because of this, we urge you to support the 2.2 millage tax increase to fully fund DHS in the 2025 budget. I have provided 20 copies of my testimony as well as a community profile that represents the 38 communities served by the Human Services Center Mon Valley. Thank you for your time and attention to this important matter.
Thank you. Joe?
Actually, before Mr. Hladieck starts, the next group of 10 will be Aaron Williams, Karen Hochberg, Brooke Garrett Genneret, Jamaya Moore, Nick Cotter, Maria Silva, Samantha Murphy, Kim Eckle, Monica Ruiz, and Antoinette Cota. Now, number eight, Joe Hladieck.
So I didn't hear, did you call me?
Not yet.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Next up would be Abby Ray Lacombe.
Can they hear outside? And there's still a lot of people downstairs trying to get in.
Yeah. Okay. Juliet?
Juliet would be next.
Okay. Can you, yeah, you can hear me. An ordinance to require, oh, I'm Julie Zavon from Squirrel Hill, 15217. I always come here and talk about election-related issues for change from taxation. So, an ordinance to require checking citizenship of people on the voter rolls is in committee, and that's what I'm going to be addressing. It's illegal for non-citizens to vote. Procedures prevent them from registering to vote. If they do vote, they are prosecuted and risk deportation. Nonetheless, we all agree that only eligible people should register to vote, so I researched how big a problem is non-citizen voting. The Heritage Foundation maintains a database of proven instances of U.S. voter fraud. I wanted to see the results it showed for the huge effort to find illegal voting in 2020. I searched the database for criminal convictions for 2021, '22, and '23. For those three years nationwide, I found only nine cases of voter impersonation and 28 cases of ineligible voting. Conclusion, the controls in our elections work. The inevitable response is that no illegal vote is acceptable. That's true, and that's why these people face criminal prosecution. We similarly try to prosecute every homicide, but accept that some homicides occur regardless. The standard we apply is not preventing every homicide in the first place. That's obviously not achievable. For perspective, in 2019, there were more than 16,000 cases of homicide. There were fewer than 20 cases of criminal prosecutions for illegal voting. The data show that non-citizen voting isn't a threat. So what are the major threats to elections? This key question leads to the other point I want to make. What is the proper framework for evaluating any proposed change to voting systems? With any change, three things come into play that involve trade-offs requiring careful analysis. One, what is the cost or resources required to make the change? Two, what is the impact on election security? Three, since any change affecting voter convenience or hurdles affects turnout, what percent decline in turnout is acceptable, and what criteria are you using to conclude that it is acceptable? When you use this framework to evaluate the proposed ordinance, what is the result?
If you could wrap it up? Thank you. Aaron? Not here. Karen?
Thank you. I'm Karen Hochberg. I live at 6449 Rosemore, Pittsburgh, 15217, but I'm here as the Executive Director of the Plum Senior Center located in Council District 8. I'm here on behalf of Meals on Wheels Greater Pittsburgh, a collaboration of six county providers critical to older adults in our county. We are here to urge you to vote yes on the 2.2 mil tax increase. If cuts are made, ensure human service funding is protected, and use your political capital to advocate state-level property tax reform. Current funding does not cover the cost of the services we deliver. Center funding has remained flat for 10 years while our costs have increased. Your actions are critical to maintain and strengthen support services for 40% of residents aged 50 and up. For the past year, we have joined other focal point senior center directors, working with the Area Agency on Aging, to develop a vision for Allegheny County senior centers. We've visited centers in Chicago, Detroit, and Charlottesville where state-of-the-art spaces serve as vibrant hubs for residents. These centers are so integral to their communities that realtors highlight them as draws for retirees seeking supportive communities. Without your support for this tax increase, this vision will remain out of reach. We understand the concerns about tax increases, particularly for older adults. It's important to note that the county millage represents a small portion of overall property taxes, while municipal and school taxes are the greatest burden. This proposed budget offers an increase to the homestead exemption, which lowers the burden on some homeowners. We assert that your county tax dollars supporting aging services are used efficiently and effectively. The Department of Human Services awards us performance-based contract. Last year, nearly 400,000 meals were delivered to 2,500 older adults. 130,000 hot lunch and program service units were delivered to 8,000 seniors. 26,000 hours of volunteer hours were contributed to support our mission. Without this funding, services would be reduced to simple meal drop-off with no wellness checks. For many real meal recipients, our drivers are the only human connection they have all day. The impact of county AAA funding on senior centers means reduced or no fitness centers, no bingo games, you don't want to get in the way of that, or cultural trips. Less connection to state and county programs means we'll reduce wellness calls. Centers would become basic meal distribution points, stripping away the programs and services that connect older adults to each other. So please vote yes, protect human service funding, advocate to change property taxes at the state level. Thank you for your consideration.
Not here? Oh, she's right there, okay.
Hi, I'm Brooke Genneret. I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I am the Director of Prevention Services at a child abuse prevention organization called Family Resources located down the street in Uptown. Two of the prevention services that I oversee are our family support centers, the Hill District Family Center, and then also the BJWL Out of School Time Program, which was founded in in 1996 by Beverly Jewel Wall Lovelace in conjunction with the Pittsburgh Foundation. It was her dream to provide this after-school space in public housing communities specifically. So what she did, she talked to various community members and asked what it was that they needed, and they all said after-school care and summer programming for their kids so they could work and the kids could be kept safe. So, right now, we have six out-of-school-time programs that are all located in public housing communities, and we provide social and emotional learning programming. We provide trauma screenings, homework help. Our focus, like I said, is on social and emotional learning, so we're teaching our kids how to regulate emotions, how to, you know, be self-determining, and all of that kind of stuff. And most importantly, it provides structure from a sometimes violent and chaotic environment. Losing this particular program would mean 21 community members would no longer be able to ensure and monitor the safety of the 200 children that we serve in those six public housing communities every day. It's also important to note that each of those kids gets a hot meal and a snack as well every day. I was going to say a little bit about our family center, but there are a lot of people from the Family Center Network, so I just want to read a letter from one of my team members who has worked for BJWL for the last 18 years. So I'm reading in her voice. "I want to share how an out-of-school-time program has had an impact on my life, my children, and my family, and I'm sure countless others. The programs are often seen as educational or recreational, but for me, they were so much more. As a survivor of sexual assault, I faced overwhelming emotions of fear, confusion, and isolation. During that difficult time, I found hope in my out-of-school-time program. It wasn't just a place to spend time, it became one of my lifelines. Being raised in public housing, and as a product of that environment, I have always related to the children I now have the privilege of serving. These children remind me of who I once was, and what it feels like to have to face barriers and grow up in a toxic community, and long for a place where I could feel safe and supported, seen, and valued. The out-of-school-time program provided all of that for me. As I grew older, I was blessed with the opportunity to give back by working at Family Resources' BJWL program, which mirrors the program that I went to as a kid." Thank you.
Say nothing, Rick? Okay, Nick?
What's up, everybody? So I'm Nick Cotter, and I was born and raised in South Pittsburgh and Carrick in Brookline. Today, I'm speaking on my own personal capacity, and I'm a property owner still in Brookline. And I urge everyone on council to spike the millage by 2.2, right, to fully fund DHS and other human services. Something that's really important to understand is if that doesn't happen, there will be absolutely devastating consequences. For folks that don't know, DHS primarily operates on a match. For every local dollar we get, we get $4 back from the state. You take away that dollar, we lose $5 in funding. That's math, right? So that would have devastating consequences. Well, I could talk about a lot of programs that would lose funding. I want to focus on one near and dear to my heart, which is the Allegheny County Community Violence Reduction Initiative. For folks not aware, this is the single largest investment in public health approaches to violence reduction that the county's ever made. It is not a coincidence we've seen a significant decline in homicides since these investments happened, right? So what would happen if you take those investments away? Well, one, there's a ton of people here, so many people, they can't fit in this room, they're downstairs. Do we got violence reduction people in this room? Could you guys stand up if you're here? This is a small fraction of the over 100 people that would lose their job if you don't do this spike, and they put their lives on the line every single day. Look at them, they would lose their job. Second, if we lose this funding, there's a huge cost to the taxpayer. On average, a single homicide costs $13 million. You know what, our $17 million, rather, you know what our entire initiative costs per year? $13 million. Think about those cost savings for just per year, $13 million, how many homicides we prevent versus the $17 million per incident. And lastly, and very importantly, if you take away these programs, violence can spike back to what they were, 2020, '21, 2022. These programs make a difference. These people risk their lives doing this. So taken all together, if you are a council and you have in your district Stowe Rocks, Pittsburgh South Hilltop, the Hill District, Homewood, East Hills, Lincoln, Leamington, Lorimer, Penn Hills, Wilkinsburg, upper Mon Valley communities like Braddock and North Braddock, lower like Clarid and McKeesport, Duquesne, Homestead, violence in your area may spike. If you're outside of those areas, doesn't matter, that costs the taxpayer. I'm a homeowner. You know how much it's going to cost me with about $110,000 in assessment, extra a month with the homestead exemption? About $10 extra a month. And we can save lives with $10 extra a month. So again, when you make this decision, look at every single one of these men and women that risk their lives to save people in Allegheny County, and you think about that when you make your vote. Please go to the full 2.2 millage increase. Thank you so much for your time.
Maria? Samantha?
Hello, I'm Samantha Murphy, 209 Twin Oaks Drive, Pittsburgh, 15237, District 1. My name's Samantha Murphy, I live in District 1. I also own my home. My career has been focused on information and referrals connecting people who are at risk to the services they need. My understanding is that there could be widespread cuts to preventative services if a full 2.2-millage budget doesn't pass and the state matching dollars aren't accessed. A lot is at stake with the vote on December 6th. Our children, families, and older adults, and people with disabilities count on prevention-type services every day. I would assume that many people who oppose the full-budget proposal right now would not be personally impacted by cuts to human services, so I wanted to share a little bit about what that work is like. There are two kind of principles that are important to me in this work. One is the value of relationships. We're from Pittsburgh. We take care of our community. Making solid relationships with our providers, our clients, and our civic leaders is a way to get things done. This is one of the reasons why no county council will fully fund Department of Human Services with this budget, because we don't abandon our most vulnerable community citizens in a time of need. Some examples of prevention services include rental assistance for an adult with a physical disability to avoid eviction, family support services for young parents who don't have other support networks, services for families when children are truant from school, services and resources for grandparents who are guardians of their grandchildren, counseling for two parents who are parenting children from two different households, a clinician that can provide a drug and alcohol evaluation for someone who doesn't have medical insurance, programming for perpetrators of intimate partner violence who are ready to stop hurting their pair more, and food assistance for older adults who are unable to cook safely at home. When people reach out asking for help with these kinds of things, they can't wait until they hit worst-case scenario before they get help. People can't wait to get evicted to receive rental assistance. They can't wait until they get so frustrated that they hurt a child or leave them unsupervised without getting parenting help. They can't wait until they completely lose a relationship with their children after divorce if relationships are stressful. They can't wait to overdose before getting treatment for substance abuse. They can't wait to be arrested for serious crimes and hurting their partner when they want to change their behavior. They can't wait to eat. I ask you to consider what's morally right in this situation, and I urge you to fully fund the budget that our county executive has proposed. I'm a human services worker and a homeowner, and I'm willing to pay the modest amount that has been proposed in order to preserve the safety.
Thank you. Kim? Monica?
Good evening, my name is Monica Ruiz. I'm the Executive Director of Casa San Jose. I'm also a resident of Brookline. I currently live in Councilperson Palmasino's district, and I'm here because I don't think that I need to go over what has been said here and the last time that I came and spoke in front of you all, because I think you all know what's at risk. And the fact that there are so many people here that are asking you to do the right thing, and you all still don't have consensus. So what I'm asking you right now is to have respect for the people that elected you, speaking specifically to my district person. I tried to get a meeting with you to talk to you about this. I was also one of the co-chairs of the All-in Allegheny process when Sarah came into office, and I dedicated my time, my energy, and my knowledge to create a roadmap for a wonderful county for everyone. This is part of that process. And so if you believe in this city like the way that I do, I'm urging you to vote in a way that's going to help all of the city members, specifically in your district, so that they can get the services that they need. We all know that federal cuts are coming, and that's going to leave us here with less and less money to work with, and we're going to be at ends with one another. And that's not the type of environment that I want to live in, because I work very, very hard to support the growing immigrant population here. And in case you did not know, the immigrant population grew over 80% in the last 10 years, and it is the only population that is growing in this county, because our population has been steadily declining for 50 years. So I'm asking you, once again, to do the right thing and support this budget, because we all desperately need it.
Thank you. Antoinette?
I brought copies of my statement, I don't know if you can...
You can just hand it to them.
So this part isn't scripted, but I think you all should know, there's about 70 or 80 people downstairs, some of them standing in the rain because they care about this issue so much. It makes me emotional, so I just thought you should know what you can't see. Hello, I'm Kim Colley-Echol, and I live in District 3 in Allegheny County. I am here to ask you to please approve the 2.2-millage tax increase proposed by our county executive and fully fund the county budget. If this cannot be done, I ask you to please, at the very least, approve a budget that protects funding for our Department of Human Services. I lead a 501(c)(3) Footbridge for Families, which receives 75% of its funding from DHS and is at risk of having to terminate our services for residents across Allegheny County without this modest and necessary tax increase. Footbridge provides rapid gap-filling support so that financial crises do not escalate. To put it simply, we prevent county citizens from requiring much more costly health and human service assistance. For families that barely make ends meet and suffer an unplanned financial crisis, we pay bills to keep the heat and water on, to keep families housed and together, and to help them maintain employment. The return on investment of our work is proven out in evaluation findings. Although we appear on the budget as a cost, our work provides the county with a net savings of thousands of dollars. We prevent families from having to use emergency shelters and the child welfare system. We decrease medical costs by helping medically vulnerable families adhere to healthcare regimens and avoid mental health crises, and this is in the administrative data. This is DH Data Warehouse data that is telling us this. Independent analyses from a national foundation have also shown that for every dollar of aid we provide, recipients stand to earn $122 more over the 30 years after our support. Basically, across any metric that you would hope to see positively impacting our residents and the overall county tax position, Footbridge's preventive intervention moves the needle in the right direction. But we need DHS fully funded to keep doing this work. I've begun to speak nationally about Footbridge's work given our results, including at the White House this past summer. Allegheny County's entire prevention ecosystem, run by DHS, is a national exemplar. Please vote responsibly so that we can continue to be a community that others aspire to emulate, one where the well-being and prosperity of all, including our most vulnerable, is a value that's a part of the bedrock of who we are. It not only makes moral sense, it makes dollar sense. Thank you.
Colleen?
You might have missed us. I'm sure. Maria Silva?
Oh, she was here, okay. Maria?
My name's Maria Silva, and I'm at 102 Timber Lane Drive in the North Hills, 15229. I am a provider and a family member and community member and a property owner. My name, again, I told you, I'm here to support the 2.2 proposed budget for Allegheny County's Executive Innen Rato. Some quick information for you. I know that there are a lot of you here tonight, and one out of every six of our children has a mental health issue. One out of six. That is a statistic that is from NAMI. And I look around at the representation here of the grandchildren, the children, the future children, the nieces, the nephews, the community members, and all of the neighbors that are represented here. One out of six of those children we represent will use the mental health services from DHS at some time if they're not already using them. I work at Allegheny Family Network. We provide parent-peer support services to families who are raising children with mental health and behavioral concerns. We meet families in their homes and help them navigate the child-serving systems in order to improve their quality of life for their children. AFN serves approximately 300 families per month. In 20,000 and 2023, we've served over 2,000 families. In 2024, we've served over 1,900 families, parents and children included. We've touched the lives of 10,000 individuals in the past two years. I'm here to represent those families across Allegheny County and our agency who receives the majority of our funding from Allegheny County Department of Human Services. Many of those that we've served are also involved in child welfare, juvenile justice, truancy, and crisis at the Western Psychiatric and Resolve Services. I, myself, have raised six children. Several of them have used the child-serving systems. I have a daughter with bipolar disorder who attempted suicide at 15. I have a son with ADHD, who I never thought would graduate from high school. I have a son with a very rare disorder, who has given 12 years to live. Needless to say, through the Department of Human Services, I've used those services as I was also coming up. My daughter received those services. She graduated from the University of Pittsburgh with a degree in behavioral neuroscience. She's married, and she's thriving. My son with ADHD is running a successful business, and he just had his first child. And that child that was supposed to be 12, he's 30. When you help the people who love somebody with a behavioral health concern, you help the individuals, their family, and their community. My story is not unique. All of our family members at AFN have the same stories. One of my staff wrote in her story about growing up with trauma, abuse, and being in the foster system, in psychiatric hospital stays, shelters, attempted suicide, and group homes. She stated, "Without the support from DHS, she would have never recovered from the abuse and trauma, and she would be dead today." She serves in various roles at our agency, from boots-on-the-ground to her behavioral health positions as a leader. She has successfully raised four beautiful children, some of those needed DHS programs, into adulthood, and now has four amazing grandchildren. I could tell you the stories of those that we've helped from all of their services that they needed, but they are in the folders that I brought today. Those are all the representations that we got over the weekend, just over the weekend. I could tell you about the comfort we give them. I'm going to let their words speak for you. Without DHS funding, this population is a very vulnerable population...
Thank you.
...would not fill these services. Thank you.
Next.
Hi, I am not Jamaya Moore. That's my colleague who is not here, so I took her spot, okay? My name is Amy Kolik, and I'm the Executive Director of Family Resources at 1425 Forbes Avenue. We're an agency whose mission is to prevent and treat child abuse by strengthening families. Want to know how we do it? We create systemic change. You see, there are these things called protective factors: nurturing and attachment, knowledge of parenting and child and youth development, parental resilience, social connections, and concrete support for families. All day, every day, the professionals at Family Resources are helping families implement one, two, or all of these protective factors to prevent child abuse from happening. But guess what else these same protective factors help to combat? Violence and crime, poverty and unemployment, access to drugs and alcohol, unstable housing, food insecurity, and low community involvement. This is what we're all doing. Every human services provider here in this room and in the county is implementing protective factors to combat family and community risks. Isn't this what we all want? Because of the Allegheny Department of Human Services, we are creating systemic change in our communities. Any reduction in funding provided to us will be catastrophic to children, youth, and families. Members of the council, I urge you to pass the 2.2-millage tax increases and fully fund the county budget so that we can continue to serve our most vulnerable residents. Because if not us, then who? Thank you.
Thank you. Jer, can you call the next 10, please?
Number 21 is Colleen Young. Number 22 is Thomas Fowler. 23 is Leon Rocky Moore. 24 is Reverend Eileen Smith. 25 is Michael Skirpan. 26 is Jonathan Budd. 27 is Dr. Patrick Cooper. 28 is Michelle Carmelo. Number 29 is Myre McCarthy, I'm sorry. And number 30 is Jean Gressim Jacobs.
So are you Antoinette?
I'm Colleen.
You're calling. Okay, so we're skipping Antoinette, and we're moving on to Colleen. Just, Antoinette's not here, correct? Okay, Colleen, go ahead.
All right. Good evening, distinguished county council members. Thank you for your time and attention to the critical importance of investing in a county budget that protects essential human services with a 2.2-millage tax increase. My name is Colleen Young. I'm a homeowner in District 11, but I'm speaking tonight in my professional capacity as Director of Government Affairs for the Greater Pittsburgh Community Food Bank. Through our direct services and our network of over...
county partners, who otherwise would be forced to turn away our neighbors facing food insecurity. A potential cut of $137 million to DHS would have devastating impacts on our neighbors and communities, including both the people we serve today and people who may need our services tomorrow if the budget does not fund essential safety net programs. We know that cutting human services that provide critical support, such as housing assistance, childcare through out-of-school programs, and senior services and more, will mean that people will be forced to make impossible choices between paying for food and paying for other basic needs. Currently, 1 in 9 individuals and 1 in 6 children are food insecure in Allegheny County. Of those, 44% live in households that earn too much to qualify for federal SNAP assistance and often must rely on the charitable food network to help keep enough food on the table. Many of our county's food pantries operate out of human service agencies, whose ability to serve their communities would be decimated by deep cuts DHS would face without increased revenue. These partners are trusted resources in our communities that enhance the quality of life for seniors, children, families, and all residents of our county. Without these programs and agencies, barriers to accessing food will sharply increase. It is imperative that Allegheny County continues to fund human services that support our neighbors to be safe and healthy. For these reasons, we are asking you to invest in our communities, protect human services, and pass a budget with the 2.2-millage tax increase. We also support increasing the homestead exemption to reduce the tax burden for homeowners with lower or fixed incomes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thomas?
Hi, I'm Jay. I'm number three on the agenda items.
If, moving forwards, if you're not here, you're going to move to the end, so...
I'm going to come downstairs.
Well, I know that, but they're going to need to wait until the end because we've already moved past them, and the council rule says you forfeit your turn if you're not here. So, go ahead, but you'll be the last one.
Good evening. My name is Jay Ting Walker, and I'm an outreach coordinator with Cleaner Council, a nonprofit environmental health organization with offices in Philadelphia and Pittsburgh. The council's been working to protect everyone's right to a healthy environment for over 50 years. The council has thousands of members, including frontline residents in Allegheny County, whose families have been harmed by pollution for generations. Cleaner Council is excited to see the appointment of a new class of Allegheny County Board of Health members. It's good to see nominees with strong public health credentials. We encourage the county council to approve these appointments to ensure the smooth operation of the Allegheny County Health Department, ACHD. A well-functioning ACHD is an important part of ensuring that the health of Allegheny County residents is protected from harmful air pollution. However, for a well-functioning ACHD to be a reality, it must be reasonably funded. We have seen over the years how inadequate funding has hamstrung the ability of the department to properly create and enforce air quality regulations and permits. ACHD is asking for adequate funding so that it can protect vulnerable communities and fulfill its Clean Air Act responsibilities entrusted to it by EPA. A fully-staffed ACHD could also potentially prevent avoidable major pollution events by enabling sufficiently frequent and comprehensive facility inspections. Allegheny County is currently in major budget discussions. There is much apprehension over raising taxes to fund county services. Here's a chance to have a win-win. The permit fee increases that ACHD is seeking would ensure that our Title V air permitting program is appropriately funded without costing county taxpayers assent. The proposed fees are miniscule next to the profits made by the county's largest polluters, and they would enable ACHD to better ensure that facility operators obey the laws that protect our communities. Please vote to approve the appointments to the Allegheny County Board of Health when the time comes. Please also vote to approve the increased permit fees for major Allegheny County polluters when that vote comes up, both in committee and at council. Both actions will contribute greatly in ensuring a healthy Allegheny County for all. Thanks.
Thomas? Not here. Leon?
That's a lot of information, so I'm going to humanize myself a little bit. Is that all right? My name is Leon Rocky Moore. I'm the owner of Roximal Sports. We specialize in elevating youth profiles so they can choose post-secondary education ultimately at the end of all of our services. But one of the things that we do with DHS, and specifically with CYF, is we do mental health services and violence prevention measures with our therapeutic boxing program. Now, we service all kids, white, black, brown, purple, red, yellow, you name it. We service them all. Now, what I can say to you is this: We are frontline workers. There's people in the room that I see that are frontline workers who do similar work. We are here trying to help change the dynamic and reduce the violence in the city and around the city as well, Pittsburgh's not exempt. There's surrounding areas that need it too in the suburbs as well, some of these places you may live, just like I do. What I have learned, notice I'm not looking at notes anymore, I'm humanizing myself. What I have learned is that CYF has already made the decision that if you guys do not vote to do a tax increase to fix this problem, that they're going to cut prevention services first. They already made the decision. That means we gone. Now, if we're there to help reduce the violence and try to keep a lid on it, there's an old saying: If you don't take care of the problem that's in your backyard, eventually it winds up in your house. So the question is, what are we going to do about that when December 3rd gets here? If we haven't had a tax increase since 2011, and it's 2024, and I'm a business owner and we have a deficit, that just only means we're growing the problem. And that old team acronym, "Together Everyone Achieves More"? Sometimes we have to fix the problem ourselves. So if we all just, and if the tax difference is only $20 on average per person per year, somewhere around there, give or take, if that is what's keeping us from doing the right thing, to keep all the frontline workers encouraged enough to stay there? Because it takes a special kind of mindset and a special kind of attitude to want to stay there and deal with youth who are defiant, who are mentally disturbed, who are emotionally broken, who have broken families. What are we doing? What kind of message are we sending if we don't vote the right way? If it's the easiest and the most best solution, why are we not entertaining it if it's just a simple vote of yes, and let's all pay an extra $20 or even less a year to fix the problem? More people spend more money on that, and they coffee every month. You can't tell me that coffee's more important than our kids.
Reverend Smith?
To the county executive, members of county council, to all of you and all of the 50 who are downstairs in the struggle, good evening. My name is Reverend Eileen Smith. I am the Executive Director of South Pittsburgh Coalition for Peace, located at 320 Brownsville Road in the South Hilltop. I'm here on behalf of the three evidence-based programs that we are funded for under the DHS Community Violence Reduction Initiative grant that I authored, which is a five-year grant in the second year of funding. Finally, a brilliant violence prevention plan, proven to work and does work. Without the 2.2-mill property tax increase, which as a homeowner, I am happy to pay, these three evidence-based programs will end, and the millions of dollars in county investments in these programs will be wasted. And I know you do not want to waste money. Finally, the South Pittsburgh Peacemakers Cure Team over there has violence intervention specialists, outreach workers. They have a funded space that they can go to to do mediations and prevent retaliations, and not on the street corner where they are in harm's way. A place where they can strategize daily before going into the streets for eight hours a day to form relationships with the highest-risk individuals. And then we refer them to the ACTS Transitional Employment Program, where they get trauma-informed care, and we reduce the risk factors of gun violence, such as the social programs that will be cut, treating it as a disease that it is and a public health problem that can be prevented and stopped. Sending the message that there are alternatives to gun violence and that it is not the norm and will not be tolerated. The other evidence-based program is Becoming a Man, a Youth Violence Prevention Program curriculum in Brashear and Carrick High School, where the peacemakers collaborate with that program, reducing violence in school by 50% according to a two-year comparison study. And I speak for all these programs across the county. And if these and other social services programs are ended, there will be more gun violence than has ever been seen before, because out of lack of programs comes fear and anger, desperation to survive. We recently lost a violence intervention specialist to gun violence off duty. So we are more determined, and I ask you to do the right thing and help us continue to make a difference and save lives in Allegheny County. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael? Michael?
Hello. My name is Dr. Michael Skirpin. I'm a lifelong Pittsburgher. I grew up in the Mon Valley region. I'm the Executive Director of Community Forge in Wilkinsburg, who's a partner of the counties, and I'm a professor at Carnegie Mellon University, a teaching faculty in tech ethics. And my goal here is, there's a room full of heroes actually out here and downstairs and everywhere that are holding this county together and making it a really, like, growing, like, more livable space for more people. We say more livable, and of course, we know there's huge equity gaps in what really is livable. And there is a bunch of people here holding this all together. And so my goal here is, instead of repeat mantras and teach you guys more, because there's people who are probably better at that, I'm going to go with some effective communication goals here. Number one, how did we get here? So, we haven't raised the millage rate since 2011, even modestly. And then we let our predecessor county executive stuff this deficit that's growing with COVID money that was to expand services and do things that were being exacerbated by the pandemic. And instead of expanding services and doing new and innovative things, we stuffed a hole that folks were ignoring. And so I'm kind of curious, how did the county executive pass this budget and stuff this county money into this deficit? Now everyone's worried about, oh my gosh, I don't know if I can vote for a millage rate increase. Hold up. Why didn't we think about this when we were stuffing COVID money? Was nobody reading the budget? Was nobody checking Rich Fitzgerald? I'm just wondering. And so, I bring this all up to say that now, there's going to be immediate consequences. If we cut preventative services, I'm telling you through the things I see at Community Forge, the things I see through many of these providers, youth truancy in schools is going to go up. And that means crime's going to go up, and there's going to be other problems lingering around out in the county. The county is going to become less livable. People are going to be upset. They're going to be connecting the dots, and they're going to be like, hey, huh, what's going on? I don't really like where Pittsburgh's going. We already see all the complaints about homelessness downtown. We see these complaints being erupted. It's going to grow, right? And so I'm going to say, my message, my goal, with the outreach I have, and I'm very connected in many communities, will be to make sure the names of everyone who doesn't vote for millage rate increase, those dots are going to be connected. I'm going to make sure that when people are like, hey, what's going on downtown? Hey, what's this? Hey, this person didn't want any of these preventative services. Here's all the things that are happening. That will be my mission, is to make sure that those dots are connected, that the community is educated about how we got here. And so anybody who's not going to vote, I just hope you're ready to defend yourself in that setting. Because if you vote for the right thing to keep this county together, keep doing good things that are holding us together, that are growing equity, that are actually making this place more livable, then thank you for that. Thank you for listening. Thank you for hearing out these heroes. But if you're not going to do that, I hope you're ready to defend yourself and be on call, because I'll make sure the dots are connected. Thank you.
Jonathan? Jonathan? If Jonathan, Dr. Cooper, Dr. Cooper's next. Dr. Cooper, you're next.
Oh, not me.
I'm sorry. I didn't, I couldn't hear, so we're moving on.
Well, I'm not...
Okay, we'll let you go this time, but if you don't hear your name called, when I call you next time, we're skipping the person, just to be clear. So please, again, we're trying to get through this orderly with everyone. Give everyone ample opportunity to get this done. So, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'm Jonathan Budd, a District 11 resident and a 30-year homeowner. I'm also the Associate Executive Director of Kids Voice, and we provide the legal representation each year to more than 2,000 abused and neglected kids here in Allegheny County. I can tell you with certainty that these children depend on DHS-funded services to keep them safe, to heal their trauma, and guide them to a better future. The county executive's budget would keep the services in place, as you've heard. The counterproposal of 1 mill versus 2.2 millage would reduce by $136 million DHS's budget. That would dramatically impact the clients that we serve. There is already a shortage of mental health supports. There's already a shortage of foster homes and other services to keep them safe and healthy. Cutting 136 is only going to make that worse. I've included a page in your handout about each, which, how many clients, DHS clients, and how many services and money is spent in each of your districts. I'm asking you to maintain the full funding. You've heard about the need to cut, and you've heard about the leveraging of funds, but here's what it boils down to: $136 million that DHS would need to cut, only $27 million of that is actual county dollars saved. The other $109 million are matching state funds that have already been allocated to Allegheny County. Those will be left on the table. But what makes that worse is that the way the state works is, if you don't spend your money, you get less the next year. So the 109 will be 109 next year, 109 less the following year, 109 less ad infinitum unless something would change. So that would just be throwing away 109 million and 136 million. You've already heard from many people what those needed services are. We have a bird's-eye view of that and can concur with many of those services. I also want to point out that these cuts would mean losing 2,000 jobs. And I can't imagine our state legislators would be happy about this wasting of $109 million that they went to bat for so that we could have it in Allegheny County. So whether you find other dollars to cut that aren't leveraged, or, which I would hope you would do, approve the 2.2 millage increase, please find a way to fund these critical DHS services. It comes down to simple math: Keeping 136 million in services, 2,000 jobs, and 109 million in recurring state funding year after year? Or throwing away that to save $27 million, less than 2.5% of the proposed $1.2 billion county budget on the backs of abused and neglected kids and the variety of other groups you're going to hear from today? To me, the answer is pretty simple. We need to fund this fully. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Patrick. I'm at 729 Franklin in Wilkinsburg. I'm a native-born resident of the county, a lifelong educator and advocate for a thriving community, specifically to the work that the DHS does. I've worked with over a dozen out-of-school-time organizations supported by the county to help youth not just learn, but also have positive adult mentors in their lives, a second family, if you will, of people who love them and can guide them. I've also done work collaborating with the county's violence reduction programs. I've seen the full transformation of what happens when youth aren't loved and supported when they're younger, what kind of young adults they can become, and where that can end up if that cycle isn't interrupted by trained and dedicated public servants. Pulling the plug on these resources will be disastrous to our most vulnerable citizens. But look, maybe some folks don't care about our most vulnerable citizens. Maybe $15 a month in extra taxes would be better spent on a new streaming service. I'm not here to judge. What I am here to do is to assure some of the people here that it actually will affect everyone, not just our most vulnerable citizens. These cuts are going to deteriorate our public safety, our economic outlook. Businesses don't want to invest in dangerous and blighted and impoverished communities, and general stability that comes from a more equitable society. So to my more conservative representatives, I understand the importance of balancing the budget, running a responsible county. I also ran a small business for many years. I get that we should try and do more with less and only tax when we know the community needs the service, and that it's harder to take away programs once they're there. I get it. But raising the millage rate in this instance is actually the fiscally responsible thing to do. Cutting preventative programs to cut costs is like stopping going to the doctors to cut costs. Yes, there's always the emergency room, but that's not the most cost-effective or just way to serve our community. Not to mention, like folks have been saying, that much of these dollars have matching funds, and so we're literally leaving money on the table available to our community for these programs. And to my more liberal representatives, come on, do the right thing. We talk and talk about model governments around the world that invest in their people by using tax dollars to keep their community safe and thriving. This is a tax increase on the order of just... Pulling the plug on these resources will be disastrous to our most vulnerable citizens. But look, maybe some folks don't care about our most vulnerable citizens. Maybe $15 a month in extra taxes would be better spent on a new streaming service. I'm not here to judge. What I am here to do is to assure some of the people here that it actually will affect everyone, not just our most vulnerable citizens. These cuts are going to deteriorate our public safety, our economic outlook, businesses don't want to invest in dangerous and blighted and impoverished communities, and general stability that comes from a more equitable society. So to my more conservative representatives, I understand the importance of balancing the budget, running a responsible county. I also ran a small business for many years. I get that we should try and do more with less and only tax when we know the community needs the service, and that it's harder to take away programs once they're there. I get it. But raising the millage rate in this instance is actually the fiscally responsible thing to do. Cutting preventative programs to cut costs is like stopping going to the doctors to cut costs. Yes, there's always the emergency room, but that's not the most cost-effective or just way to serve our community. Not to mention, like folks have been saying, that much of these dollars have matching funds, and so we're literally leaving money on the table available to our community for these programs. And to my more liberal representatives, come on, do the right thing. We talk and talk about model governments around the world that invest in their people by using tax dollars to keep their community safe and thriving. This is a tax increase on the order of just a few coffees a month, and it's just to people who are already privileged enough to own property, which is more than most of the folks that I work with, to literally do all the things you guys believe in, to prevent homelessness, gun violence, to promote education and racial justice. If you can't raise taxes a couple mil to defend these programs, I'm sorry, that's just hypocritical. You want something in the abstract that you won't defend when the rubber meets the road. Please stand up for your beliefs at this truly dark time in our democracy. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle?
Hello. I'm Michelle Charmelo. I'm the executive director of Maple Unified Student Academy, known as MUSA. We serve children and families by providing out-of-school-time programming. I should also add that I live in District 9 and own a property in District 6. MUSA is based in Council Districts 11 in Homestead and 9 in Munhall, which is served by county members Paul Klein and Robert Macy. On behalf of MUSA, I am here to urge you to save our services and invest 2.2 now. If the 2.2 millage increase isn't approved and the county implements even a 1-millage increase, the districts that MUSA is in stand to lose $11,535,477, which translates into the loss of services for 2,525 people, and an additional 1,900 people would lose services in District 11. We know the gap has faced budget deficits since 2021, and that COVID dollars will no longer fill that gap. So what does that mean for our families in MUSA, at Homestead and Munhall? Each year, our agency serves over 100 children. Our current budget receives $219,000 from the county to fund our work. If we don't receive this funding, we stand to lose 65 children from our roster, lay off at least five full-time staff, 20 part-time staff, and seasonal staff, which would put a tremendous burden on the working families. We have creatively leveraged our partnerships and resources with the school district, food bank, and other community organizations as best we can to limit our costs and overhead and see no room for more cuts without sacrificing quality. On behalf of our staff who live in Allegheny County and the people we serve every day, I urge you to approve the 2.2 millage increase. If we miss this opportunity, we stand to lose far more. If the safety net for our most vulnerable collapse, it may not be able to be replaced. We know you care about the people who live here and urge you to be brave and save our services. Say yes to invest in 2.2. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McCarthy?
Hi, Council. My name is Marie. I live in Bloomfield, and I want to say hi to my representative, Mr. Walton. I'm here to speak in favor of the budget as proposed. A 2.2 millage increase allows every resident to equitably contribute to our county, and passing anything less than this risks $137 million for DHS funding. We would have to cut services en masse and issue layoffs. The budget is, it's very exciting that it includes $14 million in eviction prevention and rental stabilization, and you may remember hearing me talk about this the last time I spoke. This $14 million includes rental assistance, something that the county has never directly funded. In 2016, the Pittsburgh Foundation found that eviction was a primary cause of homelessness, duh. So providers came together to develop upstream eviction prevention services, and those have been proven to be successful, and I work in one of them. The COVID-era funding currently supports these programs for county residents. Before this, rental assistance for county residents was scarce and available for limited populations or at the point of lockout. The city funds a rental assistance program. It's called the Housing Stabilization Program. They use the Housing Opportunity Fund. I worked with people this month who received HSP, Housing Stabilization Program, funding to prevent an eviction filing. Rental assistance is an essential safety net to support hard times. Many of the people who received HSP were falling behind on their rent due to job loss, family tragedy, or just surviving through poverty and making hard choices about whether they want to pay their rent in full or feed their family. City residents are lucky to have access to HSP. The county is being asked to pass a similar funding source, and you must do this because it is harder than ever to fall on hard times. Rent has increased nearly 100% in the last 10 years, and property taxes have not increased at all. Talking to the people in my life, I hear if taxes are raised, then my rent will be raised. The landlord will raise the rent anyways. My landlord raised my rent a total of $1,200 this year, and his potential tax increase for the year would only be $231. That is less than a third of my rent. People are concerned about low-income homeowners affording the tax increase. The homestead exemption accounts for this. If you live in your home full-time, it is possible your taxes will go down. Taxes for my partner's father, he lives on the North Side, will increase about $60 for the year, and that will be offset because his tax exemption will increase by thousands. There is really no negotiation here. Please pass the 2.2 millage increase and save our services. Thank you.
Jean? Lena? Bob? Go ahead and call the next 10 while they're lining up.
30 is Jean Gressom Jacobs, 31 Lena Andrews, 32 Bob Heister, 33 Julia Lee, 34 Tamara Jones, 35 Erin Erb, 36 Elaine Masters, 37 Karen Dreyer, 38 Wendy Etheridge Smith, 39 Luz Blandon, and 40 Holliday Adair.
Thank you. We'll start with Jean. Jean's not here. Lena?
Hi, everybody. My name is Lena Andrews. I'm here, I am a homeowner and taxpayer in District 10, but I'm here today as the CEO of Action Housing, the region's largest affordable housing provider that serves all of Allegheny County. We're also a major property owner and taxpayer, and we are totally in favor of taxes. I'm standing here today to urge your support for the proposed 2.2 millage tax increase to fund the Allegheny County budget, which is necessary to provide vital human services and affordable housing to the county's most vulnerable populations. Action Housing serves families who are housing insecure, youth who have aged out of foster care, veterans, seniors, those living with disabilities who need access to stable and quality affordable housing and supportive services. We are a crucial part of the safety net preventing homelessness in Allegheny County. Looking ahead, Action Housing is poised to serve upwards of 5,000 people a year using funding from Allegheny County's DHS and the Department of Economic Development. We receive $2.5 million from DHS that could be at risk if this millage increase does not pass, not to mention the funding that we receive from ACED that goes directly towards developing and preserving permanent affordable housing in Allegheny County. This is a substantial percentage of our organizational budget. We rely on funding from Allegheny County to do our work. Not only is Action Housing a service provider for vulnerable populations, but we're an employer. We employ 140 people, people who are dedicated to making Allegheny County a place where all can thrive. Any reduction in funding will be catastrophic for our clients and our workforce. I know firsthand the critical importance of funding housing and supportive services, such as emergency shelters, affordable housing options, and stabilization programs for at-risk youth. As a young adult, Sean Johnson was facing homelessness when he turned to Action Housing for help. Through Action Housing's My Place program, Sean was able to access stable housing, secure employment, and develop essential life skills and pursue a path to independence. Sean graduated from My Place, and now he works for Action Housing as a case manager in the My Place program. He helps foster care youth who are facing homelessness, find stability and support, all thanks to the funding from Allegheny County DHS. I can't imagine having to turn Sean away when he first needed help, and I don't want to turn away our county's most vulnerable populations in the future during their time of need. Thank you.
Julia?
Hi. My name is Julia. I'm a resident of District 10, and I'm here to speak in support of the eviction prevention funding in the proposed budget. When it comes to addressing social problems like eviction and housing instability, prevention and intervention are really two sides of the same coin if we're talking about how to actually deal with these problems at the root. We need to give weight and fair consideration to both, and we also have to be able to agree that these problems are problems. And I think before that can happen, we have to come to a shared understanding of what is going on and move away from assumptions and generalizations. And so I think the way we start to do that is by listening. So I appreciate you listening to me and everyone else who's here to speak tonight and downstairs. Shelter is a basic human need in the way that food and water are also basic needs, but somehow we live in a reality where this is a topic of debate, a reality where upon a landlord filing for eviction, a tenant can be locked out of their home through a court order in as little as 21 days from their initial court hearing. Eviction is an incredibly destabilizing experience, and if you think that it doesn't happen in the districts all of you represent, you'd be mistaken. If you find that hard to believe, or if this isn't something you're seeing or hearing from your constituents, I encourage you to talk to the magisterial district judges in your districts who preside over landlord-tenant cases on a regular basis. When I worked at a 40-bed domestic violence shelter in the county, we were pretty much always operating at full capacity. On top of struggling to help the residents find affordable housing, we were, at the very same time, fielding 24/7 hotline calls from people who needed shelter, and more often than not, having to tell them we didn't have space over and over again. And most of the time, it felt like all I could do was react to what was happening before me, and in doing that, I witnessed a lot of pain. I spent a lot of nights wondering why I got to sleep in a home where I felt safe and comfortable, while the residents I worked with had to sleep on a mattress this thick with a pillow this thin and virtually no housing options within reach. Why was it the hotline callers and not me who had to sleep at a bus stop, on a park bench, or in the airport lobby? In my early days of working there, I just kept thinking to myself, like, what's happening and why is this normal? And as time went on, what I then started to recognize was that this can't be the way that we operate. So my experiences in crisis intervention are really what drew me to the eviction prevention work that I do now at Rent Help Pittsburgh. And what I've learned is that when we help people address their moment of crisis before it becomes an emergency, their lives don't have to be dramatically altered, and our communities experience a return on investment. When we prevent people from becoming evicted, we prevent them from entering or re-entering the cycle of homelessness. We don't increase the burden on our already overburdened shelter systems, and we give the children and adults in this county a better chance to grow into the people they want to be. Thank you.
Not sure if this is Tamra or Tamara. Is she here? Not here anyway. Okay. Didn't want to kill her name. Erin?
Hey, everybody. Thanks for listening to us tonight. Erin Erb, I'm the executive director of Just Mediation Pittsburgh, which mediates landlord-tenant disputes with folks like Rent Help and Action right before me. But I'm here as an individual, a homeowner, landlord, taxpayer in Wilkinsburg. As a resident of Wilkinsburg, I want to see these critical county services continue uninterrupted, so I'd like you all to pass the 2.2 millage increase in the proposed budget. I'm especially interested in services this budget maintains as a homeowner and a landlord, because my house is a duplex, so I live in the upstairs unit, and I rent out the downstairs unit. My property taxes will go up by almost exactly the same projected $15 a month that the median home will experience, but this is a small and very long overdue price to pay as taxes stagnated for over a decade, despite inflation increasing the cost of services that the county provides. As a landlord for this single unit in the county, I've seen that city landlords receive support and assistance through programming at the Urban redevelopment authority that county residents cannot access, like the Housing Stabilization Program, the Legal Assistance Program for tenants. This proposed budget with its 2.2-millage property tax increase would finally give county landlords and tenants access to locally funded rental assistance programs and other eviction prevention programs that ensure that my tenants and I can work together to right the ship if they ever run into hard times and that my own resources can't help bridge the gap for. I want my tenants, who are my neighbors, to stick around, even if they fall on hard times, as we all have in our lives. The alternative costs much, much more than $15 a month when court costs, unpaid background, unit repair and turnover, and time between tenants costs the average landlord about $5,000 per unit. Please pass this budget and the proposed millage increase to make sure that our communities remain supported and intact. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Thank you. I'm Elaine Masters, and I live in the North Hills of Pittsburgh in Council District 3, served by Anita Prizio. On behalf of myself and others in Allegheny County who live with needs met through human services, I'm here to urge you to save these services and invest 2.2 now. We know the county has had a deficit budget for the past three years, which was filled by COVID relief dollars that dried up. Because my income is below the poverty threshold, I've received services from organizations like senior centers, North Hills Community Outreach, the Greater Pittsburgh Community Food Bank, which support veterans, children, women, elders, the unemployed, the underemployed, you name it. My journey began in 2009 when I was a self-employed, single mom. My industry was changing, pay scales were plummeting, work becoming scarce. I asked NHCO for help applying for LIHEP and signed up for their food pantry so the money saved on groceries could be used for other bills. I have hoped to be self-sufficient again until I fell down my basement stairs in 2015, bounced off both sides, landed on my head, suffered a traumatic brain injury, and eventually was approved for disability due to long-term concussive symptoms. Services I've received helped me make ends meet and improved my quality of life. Services like gift cards so I could buy my kids Christmas presents, fresh produce from food pantries that improved my health, holiday meals and Christmas gifts that made me feel valued and less alone, personal care items and cleaning products I couldn't afford, contributions toward my winter heating bills, after my brain injury, rights to medical appointments, and help managing bills, mail, and basic personal affairs. If these services hadn't been there for me, I could have ended up homeless or living in a facility. I wouldn't have found my way to treatments that allowed me to become, well, not as capable as before, but at least less of a burden on society. Because of my gratitude, I give back to my community by volunteering on Pennsylvania's Brain Injury Resource Line and advocating to increase awareness about things like brain injury and food insecurity. Each person served is important. We all have hopes and dreams for a life where we're not struggling to survive, but rather contributing to our communities and thriving. A cut in county funding would be destructive and demoralizing. Bottom line, human services do much more than lend a helping hand. They save lives and build resilience in our community, creating a stronger and healthier Allegheny County. I urge you to approve this 2.2-millage increase. If we miss this opportunity, we stand to lose far more. And this is so important to me that I have not driven to downtown Pittsburgh since I had my brain injury, and when my Uber canceled tonight, I got in my car and I drove down here. Thank you.
Karen?
Good evening. I'm Karen Dreyer, a resident of District 13, and I'm also the executive director for Allegheny Partners for Out-of-School Time, also known as APOST. We support out-of-school-time programs throughout all of Allegheny County with advocacy, quality improvement, professional development, and networking. I think the best way for me to do this is to use the template from a well-known children's book, If You Give a Mouse a Cookie. If you give a kid an after-school program, they get more excited about learning. When they are excited about learning, they are more interested in attending school. When they attend school more, they develop their abilities to the fullest and are contributing members of our community. When they contribute to our community, our county is stronger. If you give a kid an after-school program, they learn how to solve problems. When kids learn how to solve problems, they learn about gathering information, listening to other viewpoints, and how to use their words to communicate their ideas. When they communicate their ideas, they can build bridges with other people's ideas and develop creative solutions. When they learn how to develop creative solutions in after-school settings, they carry the skill into the larger community and world, making our world a brighter and stronger place. If you give a kid an after-school program, they meet adult mentors. When they meet adult mentors, they learn from people who care about them and who provide them with just the right amount of support and challenge to grow healthily. When kids grow healthily, they can use their minds and their talents to make Allegheny County a better place. I think the best way for me to do this is to use the template from a well-known children's book, If You Give a Mouse a Cookie. If you give a kid an after-school program, they get more excited about learning. When they are excited about learning, they are more interested in attending school. When they attend school more, they develop their abilities to the fullest and are contributing members of our community. When they contribute to our community, our county is stronger. If you give a kid an after-school program, their parents or caregivers are able to work, knowing that their children are learning and playing in a safe place. If the parents and caregivers are able to work, they are able to earn income to support their families and to support the local economy. When the parents can earn income and stay in their jobs, their employers are glad because they do not have to look for new employees. When employers keep good workers, they can focus on fulfilling their missions. If you give a kid an after-school program, they learn how to solve problems. When kids learn how to solve problems, they learn about gathering information, listening to other viewpoints, and how to use their words to communicate their ideas. When they communicate their ideas, they can build bridges with other people's ideas and develop creative solutions. When they learn how to develop creative solutions in after-school settings, they carry the skill into the larger community and world, making our world a brighter and stronger place. If you give a kid an after-school program, they meet adult mentors. When they meet adult mentors, they learn from people who care about them and who provide them with just the right amount of support and challenge to grow healthily. When kids grow healthily, they can use their minds and their talents to make Allegheny County a better place. When you give a kid an after-school program, they grow up to be healthy members of our community. When they are grown-up healthy members of our community, they bring their children to after-school programs so that they can experience all the love, play, and learning that they experienced when they were young. The DHS funding currently supports almost 6,000 kids in out-of-school time programs. For every dollar invested in that out-of-school time, there's a return of almost $7, which was found by a Pennsylvania State Commission report. Please continue to fund these programs so that our kids and their families and our county are stronger. Please pass the milage increase of 2.2 to ensure that funding for out-of-school time programs continues. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Wendy Etheridge Smith, homeowner at 3025 Heaven Drive in Penn Hills, Pennsylvania, District 7, and a proud super voter. I am the Director of Early -- provider. I'm the Director of Early Childhood Family and Community Services at the Allegheny Intermediate Unit, also known as the AIU. Our mission is to support the 42 school districts surrounding Pittsburgh Public Schools as well as their communities. We're guided by this vision: Through equitable access, all learners achieve their full potential. To make this real, we work directly with these districts and support communities through our family centers and out-of-school time programs. So I come to you tonight to ask for your partnership in ensuring our family centers and OST programs receive the essential funding they need to continue serving our communities as they have for over 25 years. The AIU administers 10 of the 22 family centers in Allegheny County, along with facilitating three OST programs. Last year alone, we supported over 4,600 families through services like financial literacy workshops, job search support to strengthen economic potential, and also helping them access essential resources like food, clothing, diapers, formula. More than 700 children under 5 took part in our home visiting program that strengthens parenting skills and promotes school readiness. And this program is nationally recognized as a Blue Ribbon affiliate. You should be proud. Our OST programs serve in Clerton and Penn Hills, keeping teens engaged, connected, and on a positive trajectory in their education and lives. To sustain our programs, we need $3.25 million annually from the Department of Human Services. Without this, thousands of families will lose critical services and all lose valuable colleagues. Stand-up colleagues, staff members, who are county residents, taxpayers, and essential community contributors. You know the shortfall. Our programs are lifelines in places like Carnegie, Clerton, Duquesne, Homestead, McKeesport, McKeesrocks, Natrona Heights, Penn Hills, and Wilmerding. Your constituents, President Katina, councilpeople, Palmieri, Fatulies, Nakarati, Chapus, Macy, Klein, and of course, Hallam and DeMarco, they're yours too. There's a story about a good Samaritan who, seeing someone in need, didn't walk by. He picked him up, put him on his donkey, bound his wounds, and covered his lodging and care. Allegheny County has a tradition of being a good neighbor, so tonight I urge you as leaders to ensure DHS continues to have the resources needed for years to come. Because I ask you a question. Hey.
Thank you.
What about the kids?
Thank you. Luz. Holiday.
Good evening, and thank you for having us here tonight. I'm Betsy Farmer. I am a resident of Allegheny County and also the Dean of the School of Social Work at the University of Pittsburgh. I'm speaking to you tonight as a citizen, a concerned citizen, not as a representative of the university. But I want you to know what I see every day as the Dean of the School of Social Work. For one thing, I see all the people I've heard speak before me tonight show up every single day for the families and the kids and for this county. And what they do has put us at the top of the pile in terms of models of what a county can be and can do. And if we fritter that away and decide that a small tax increase is something that is more damaging to us than actually supporting our services, our children, and our families, that's a serious problem. Everyone who's talked to you tonight has been in support of the 2.2 milage increase that has been proposed by the county executive. I want to remind you that the counterproposal is a 1-mil increase. You're still increasing taxes. People who are going to be irritated with you for increasing taxes are still going to be irritated. What you're going to do is increase taxes and take away their needed services. So what we are doing tonight is we are making a plea to please remember why Allegheny County is what it is. So when we think about this, the 2.2 allows us to do preventive services. It allows us to do the types of services that make Allegheny County what it is. If we don't do that, everyone talking here tonight is assuming that all of you care about the county, and I assume you all care about the county very, very much. If you care about the county, you care about all of its citizens. That is its most vulnerable, who are direct recipients of these services. It's also everyone else who is influenced by these services. So if you want parents who can go to work, you need to provide after-school care and summer care where kids can be safe so that parents can go to work without worrying about their children. If you want to have people who are working in the workforce to actually do this, you need to be a model. That's what we are now. That's what we should remain. And I urge you to pass the 2.2 mil. It will benefit our community and everyone.
Luz didn't hear her name getting called, so she got skipped. So I'm letting her speak at this point in time. But again, if I call your name and you don't come forwards, we're going to move on.
Can I have permission to announce the names going forward? My voice tends to carry a little bit more than yours. Do you mind?
That's fine.
Thank you. So my name is Luz Esneda Blandon Gonzalez, and I live in Brookline. So I am here to ask you to pass the budget to increase the property taxes. And I am speaking to Council Robber Palomazina, which is the Council for District 12, which is where Brookline is. So I'm here to talk about, and I know that a lot of people have spoken about, the after-school services and all the benefits that that brings to the table, to the children. There are going to be leaders and part of the community of this county. And I really would like to, for everybody, to pay attention to what everybody here in front of you are talking about, because it really, we are talking not about the present, but we are talking about the future, the future leaders and the kids that are going to be bringing all the wonderful things that people do when they work together and when they have opportunities and support. I also want to talk about the opioid epidemic, because my husband works for Allegheny County Health Department. And that is a very important and very concerning issue that he deals with every single day. So if we don't have the funding and if we don't have the means to help the people that need it, right now, the opioid epidemic is no longer a problem on this side of the state. It's a national issue. And we should be treating it with a lot of careful, right? And make sure that we are making the right decisions, because this is going to affect a lot of people and a lot of families, not only about services, but also about the people that are working for the county and are making sure that communities are being heard and are being provided the services to be successful. So I want you to really think about the future, not much about the present, but what are we doing to ensure that the children that are going to be sitting in the future in your seats are going to have the means to make the right decisions and the support to be able to see themselves as you? Thank you.
Call the next 10.
42, Ken Regal. 43, Kristi Owens. 44, Erica Maloney. 45, Kate Luxembourg. 46, Angela Garcia. 47, Ashley Griffin. 48, Alex Madrid. 49, Joe Griffo. 50, Yvonne Smith Tapia.
So this is Betsy? Or was that Ken?
My name is Ken Regal. I'm the Executive Director of Just Harvest, the food justice organization. We're based at 317 East Carson Street on the South Side. I'm also a resident and homeowner for the past 38 years in Highland Park in County Council District 10. We've heard a lot lately about how much the cost of living has risen in the past several years. Now, wouldn't it be nice if the price of eggs or the price of milk or the price of gasoline had only gone up twice in the past quarter of a century? Well, that's what's been proposed for the Allegheny County property tax rate, only the second milage increase in 25 years. If I'm not mistaken, not a single member of Allegheny County Council has served on this body long enough to have voted on the last milage increase about 14 years ago. So some of you may be concerned about the cost of a 2.2-mil hike in the tax rate. I encourage you to be concerned about the much deeper cost to our community if we fail to meet this fiscal challenge. The ability of Allegheny County to pay for an enormous range of vital services is at fundamental risk if we don't act now to share the burden of these growing costs. The federal pandemic relief funds that have masked this problem in recent years is drying up, and it is no secret that new federal investments in our community may shrink radically in the coming year and beyond. After-school programs, foster care, family support centers, parkland, environmental protection, public health, and the new Allegheny Go program that provides discounted transit fares for thousands of people who are just struggling to keep food on the table, all of these and more are on the chopping block without this increase. The average burden of the proposed tax hike is estimated at about $180 per year for the median homeowner. Yes, this will be a burden for some, but that burden will be far outweighed by the quality of life for all of us. Keep in mind who else shares that burden. We talk about the cost to an average homeowner, but a large share of the total property tax burden is paid by out-of-town investors in skyscrapers and luxury housing that surrounds us in this building. Let them pay their fair share for the second time in 25 years so that our safety net for those in need can remain strong. What you're hearing tonight from me and speaker after speaker after speaker are not special interests. They are the public interest of children, families, adults, elderly people of every age, gender, race, community in this county. 2.2 mils is an ounce of prevention. $100 million for the full range of what the county does every day is a pound of cure. Thank you.
Kristi.
My name is Jo Demming. I'm a resident of Perry Hilltop. I'm fortunate to be a homeowner in Allegheny County, something that a lot of people can't become right now. I am strongly in favor of the 2.1 milage increase as a homeowner, as well as my role as the Executive Director of the Pittsburgh Food Policy Council. We are a coalition of more than 100 food system stakeholders, working to create an equitable and just food system. We provide access to healthy food. We help people grow food. And we help hundreds of residents get meals in area institutions like universities and hospitals, and help them source from local farmers, growing the regional economy. Now, our members work to create a food action plan with solutions for the region. That included Allegheny Go, this amazing transit program that is providing half-off fare for people on SNAP, so they can access grocery stores, so they can access medical appointments, so they can access their jobs and get jobs and not have to worry about how they're going to get there, while they're improving the environment, because they're not on the street with cars. Now, as more and more people are forced out of the city to live in the county, they're going to have more and more issues with access. This is, you're going to have a greater human service burden than you've ever had before. And is this the time to pull back that support? Is this the time? You can look and see what happened in the city when they did that, right? When they pulled the investment, when they stopped funding kids in the rec centers, when they stopped providing, when they stopped paving roads, when they stopped caring for our communities? We saw what happened. So you can look and see what happened. So if that's a direction you want to go, that's fine. But you have an opportunity. You guys are the local, you are the, you have so much power right now to do the right thing for our local community. It's the only thing we can control right now, it feels like, in this world, is what you guys are making this choice to do. And I think that it's going to be a popular choice ultimately, because people understand that they are compassionate, they want to build a better world, and they don't want to, we've already seen what happens when we don't. So do the right thing, vote for the milage increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Erica. Kate. Kate.
Erica.
Angela. Ashley. Angela? Okay, we got a winner. Okay.
So my name is Angela Garcia, and I am a homeowner in District 1. But here, my professional role as the Executive Director of Global Links, proudly located in District 12. And I'm here because Global Links was the first organization to work with the county when the former county exec reached out in need of assistance for COVID. When we did that, we worked with all of the county's emergency response departments, the Department of Human Services, and managed over $2 million of the county's CARES dollars. Why? To help support our nonprofit peers, to help support over 400 local health and human service agencies, their caregivers, their teachers, their childcare workers, and all of the people that they care for, our most vulnerable neighbors. Why? Because we believe in public health. We had an opportunity that is unique to the nonprofit sector. Because we know how to manage inventory and respond to disasters, we raised our hand and said, we know our nonprofit peers, and we know our county residents. And the most vulnerable residents are the ones who are at risk if we do not get them, the cleaning supplies, the masks, the shields, everything they needed. And we built partnerships. Four years later, Global Links continues to work with many of those nonprofit agencies in collaboration with Trying Together, working to support our childcare providers. We leverage their limited dollars, we're all nonprofits, we all have limited budgets, to help them save dollars, because nonprofit leaders know how to manage budgets. Please, I am here as a homeowner. It is way overdue. The costs have gone up. All of our staffing costs have gone up, but these nonprofit workforce, thousands will lose their jobs if we do not approve the 2.2 bill. In addition, I've worked in the county's nonprofit sector for over 25 years. I'm a Pittsburgher by birth. I left this city and came back and could not be prouder of what we do in the nonprofit sector for our region's most vulnerable. Please, if our safety net collapses, I do not see, after 25 years of experience, how will we replace that or rebuild it? And we should not abandon our county's most vulnerable for lack of courage to pass the budget that we all need, and it is about time. Thank you.
Thank you. Ashley.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ashley Griffin, and I am from Natrona Heights, Pennsylvania. And before I start real quick here, so we had brought, I am representing the family centers of Allegheny County. They are amazing, amazing organization, has helped my family through lots in the past two years. We have binders we're going to pass around. It is a small representation of the families and community members that would be negatively affected if the 2.2 million tax increase is not passed. We gathered the following support in just 48 hours' time. In Section 1, there are photos of all the families and our children, and we all, I have to say, have amazing bonds with one another. When they say that the family center is a family center, it is family. My child and I have been part of them for the past two years, and it has been amazing. My child has formed bonds with all the wonderful, wonderful women that have been part of us. Section 2, we have collected over 60 personal testimonies from Highland families enrolled, and over 15 letters from community partner agencies and school districts. And in Section 3, we have over 400 signatures from the community members in support of the increase. I am very, very proud to be part of an amazing organization that I have Many of us have awesome stories to tell today and to be where we are right now due to, one, diaper banks. If it wasn't for the diaper banks, I probably would have been, would have been hurting very badly, because I was out of work on maternity leave, did all of that, I was out of work. The formula banks are definitely, definitely amazing, and they help tremendously, especially in a time in need of a mother who doesn't have the money, or father, to go out and buy formula at that moment for their child. The food, we, at the Highlands Family Center, they had just been approved for food distributions that have helped many, many families and community members to just get by for a week, just a little bit of food, just to help until they get to the next payday. If you can't see, my child loves each and every one of those women sitting back there. Can all the women from the family centers and men please stand up? Because I need everybody to see, this is right here, this is my family.
Thank you.
This is my family. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alex. Alex.
Good evening, Council. I wanted to start by saying thank you so much for your time and attention this evening. I'm Alex Madrid. I am virtually a lifelong Pittsburgher, presently live in Shadyside in District 11. And I'm here today to urge the Council to vote yes on the county executive's budget and the 2.2-millage increase therein. I come to this perspective as a member of the Board of Directors of the Latino Community Center. That center serves over 1,500 Latino families and their young children every year. As the Council may know, the Latino population in Allegheny County has grown by over 80% in the last decade, and the Latino Community Center, which I am immensely proud to be associated with, provides vital resources to that community. Things like after-school programs, parenting classes, school enrollment support, and so much more. And later this evening, you'll have the opportunity to hear from Rosa Maria Cristello, who's the Director of the Latino Community Center, who's going to tell you a little bit more about what it does. But I think even more importantly, you're going to have the opportunity to hear from some of the families who are served by the Latino Community Center, and the ways in which it has an immediate and important impact on their lives. So of course, the center relies on the critical funding that's at issue here, and without it, it's going to be forced to close down some of the programs that its families rely on, including notably, an after-school program that serves over 45 students. And we heard earlier, through reference to a popular children's book, right, all of the ripple effects that something like that can have. And as I was listening to the people here who are, you know, so impassioned about their causes, it occurred to me that although we can, of course, consider a tax increase as an expenditure or a burden in some way, really, it's an investment, right? It's an investment in the future of the community, and without it, the community can't grow, it can't develop, it can't prosper economically. The type of programs that the Latino Community Center offers are exactly what I think is needed to create a healthy, vibrant, growing economy here. People can't work if their kids don't have after-school care, right? We heard that. Or if they can't navigate a critical healthcare issue, we heard that too. So I would urge the Council to vote yes on the county executive's budget to ensure this critical funding, and I want to thank you again for your time.
Joe. Joe? Yvonne?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Yvonne Smith Tapia. I'm a very proud Colombian-American immigrant-nationalized citizen. I am a homeowner resident in Mont Lebanon, but today I'm speaking on behalf of my agency. I'm the Director of Refugee and Immigrant Services at JFCS. Our offices are located in Council District 11, under Council Member Paul Klein, and we serve individuals and families throughout Allegheny County. JFCS serves individuals facing the life's greatest challenges. Since 2014, DHS has funded Immigrant Services and Connections, the program named ISAC, who serves yearly around 2,500 immigrants and refugees. One of these individuals is Ahmed, so I'm going to tell you about him. He is an Afghan special immigrant visa who arrived in Pittsburgh in 2019. When he arrived in Allegheny County, he didn't know anything about the city, so he needed help getting his children enrolled in school, finding medical care, getting his wife enrolled in English language classes, and looking for meaningful work, all while trying to adapt, adjust into their new environment. With the help of ISAC, he was able to help his family not only adjust, but thrive in their new home. Today, many years later, Ahmed is working at JFCS. He's successfully helping other refugees and immigrants find jobs, as important as the jobs that he has now. Ahmed is now the proud owner of an Afghan restaurant, and he's bringing his culture and the delicious food of his home country to enrich our region. Without the proposed 2.2-millage increase, JFCS will experience a $2-million cut to vital programs, like the Immigrants and Refuge, Immigrant Services and Connections programs, ISAC. JFCS is urging you, the county council members, to pass this tax increase to ensure that our region has the services it needs to help the people continue to grow and thrive. Thank you so much for your time, and I have a copy of my statement.
Thank you. Helen? Helen? Rosa Maria?
Yes. May I proceed? Hi. My name is Dr. Helen Kalan, and I am a resident of Edgewood Borough, that is District 10. My council representative is DeWitt Walton, and I live at 406 Willow Place. I am a professor at the University of Pittsburgh School of Social Work, and I work as the Principal Investigator of our Child Welfare Education and Research Programs. That's a statewide program for the child welfare workforce, and I work with all 67 counties, but my home base and my home community is Allegheny County. I'm also a longtime member of the Allegheny County Children and Youth Advisory Board. So I'm obviously here to please encourage you to support the 2.2 and fully fund the Department of Human Services. Just out of respect for time, I'm going to list just some of the programs that are in jeopardy, and then give you some examples. Family centers, the Hello Baby program, out-of-school programs, independent living programs like the 412 Youth Zone, gun violence prevention and intervention programs, emergency shelters, rental assistance, home-delivered meals, senior centers, kids' voice legal representation, behavioral health services. And I'd like you to just to listen to two illustrations. In calendar year 2023, Pennsylvania lost 57 children to child abuse fatalities. 76% of these fatalities were due to either violent acts, lack of supervision, or asphyxiation. These 57 deaths involved newborns and children under the age of four. Eight of them occurred in Allegheny County. Another 119 Pennsylvania children suffered what are known as near fatalities, and many are living with permanent injuries as a result. 87% of these near fatalities involve children under the age of four. 13 of these near fatalities happened in Allegheny County. So can we afford to lose more children from death or from near deaths? This is the population of children that family centers and programs such as Hello Baby serve. Here's my second example. In the year 2023 through October of 2024, there were 193 homicides in Allegheny County, and that's across all age groups. One-third of these homicides include victims aged 24 and younger. And when you look at national trend data over the last 10 years, it shows you that half of the gun-related deaths of children and teenagers in our country occur in just 10 states. And guess what? Pennsylvania is one of the 10. And I want you to consider.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rosa Maria.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm Rosa Maria Cristello. I am a resident of District 3, and I am the founder and executive director of the Latino Community Center, which serves Latinos all across Allegheny County, a population which you've heard has grown by 80% in 10 years, helping stabilize the region's population decline. I ask you today to vote yes on the county's executive budget and help keep the doors open for all family centers and out-of-school time programs. Our organization operates the Latino Family Center, which serves over 1,500 families with children 0 to 5, helping them specifically raise healthy and happy children through evidence-based programming, like parenting classes, maternal health support like Hello Baby, and home visiting support. We also run our after-school program, which serves 45 children in Beechwood Elementary School, year-round, including the summer. In addition to this, our organization goes above and beyond helping families navigate systems like the school districts, all 43 school districts. We are actively working to support and build up the workforce of the future by ensuring all of our kids have access to the resources they need to thrive at every developmental milestone, from birth to adulthood. However, if the proposed budget of the county executive is not approved, or even if approved at a 1-mill, we will be forced to shut down our after-school program, leaving 45 children without a safe, welcoming space to go to after school, where they will also receive much-needed academic support. This will leave at least 45 parents at risk of losing their jobs, because they depend on our program so they can go to work. We will be forced to close the Latino Family Center, which translates to at least 15 staff members having to be laid off. This will be detrimental not only to our community, but to the overall region. To be clear, we already operate with a waitlist for all of our programs, not just because families seek out our support, but because institutions like UPMC and Allegheny Health Network refer hundreds of families to us every year. Not funding the proposed budget the county executive put forth will destabilize a whole community and strain the resources of all systems. In the long term, it will be hurting our region by, one, not having a prepared workforce, specifically a bilingual-prepared workforce for the future, and, two, by encouraging families to leave the region. I urge you to please vote yes on the county executive's budget and help keep all family centers and out-of-school time programs open. Thank you.
Thank you. Hunter? Hunter? Go ahead and call the next 10, please.
The unknown participant is now joining.
53, Hunter Bodwell. 54, Robert Dame Wood. 55, Malcolm Williams. 56, David Brangin. 57, Angelica Perez-Johnston. 58, Christine Kelly. 59, Rain Ponce. And then 60, Kara Petrowski.
Are you Hunter?
Yes.
Okay.
Hello. I am Hunter Bodwell, from 118 Margaret Streets in the 11th District. I am representing Aubrey's 412 Youth Zone. The 412 Youth Zone is a service that provides for almost 1,000 young people in Allegheny County, a safe place to be during the day, and access to employment and homeless housing resources. Personally, I have gotten to see many young people of mine move into safe and stable housing for the first time in their lives. I have gotten to see young people get involved in trade school programs, college programs, and other employment opportunities. If the 2.2-mill is not passed, we are on the list from DHS of being potentially completely eliminated from this county. Aubrey, as a, as an overall organization, has not had one person we placed in permanent housing at the 12-month mark return to any homeless agency, per Housing and Urban Development. If we provide overall so many employment, health insurance, mental health services, and make a lasting difference in this community, those ports go away with a $7-million cuts that we are facing if, overall, if this is not passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert?
Good evening. My name is Bob Dame Wood. I'm a homeowner in Mount Washington, and I'm here to ask you to support the 2.2-mill increase. Look, no one likes a tax increase, right? This is going to be a hard vote, but it's, but it's worth it. I mean, the county is worth it, the services that the county provides are worth it, the employees of the county are worth it, the programs that get funded by the county are worth it, the families that get served by all of those are worth it, right? This is a tough vote, but, but it's worth it. And it's, it's really, it's not that much. I mean, the average increase in my neighborhood is $115 a year, right? You know, $9 a month, 30 cents a day. I mean, that's really not that much, and, but what we're talking about is absolutely critical. You know, the last, the last speaker mentioned homelessness. I mean, we've got a homelessness crisis right now, right? And the county has to be in, you know, top, like, fighting shape to deal with it. I mean, this is not the time to cut services, not the time to cut, you know, staffing and programming. So, look, I'll, I'll leave it with that. Please vote for the increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Malcolm? Malcolm?
Okay, moving on. 56. David? David? You David?
I'm David.
Okay.
Hi, David.
Another winner.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Dave Brangin. I'm a homeowner in Sharpsburg, and like many others, I am advocating for passing the county executive's budget and the 2.2-millage increase. A lot of people have spoken very passionately about why this is the right thing to do. I want to just focus a couple comments on why this is a smart thing to do. And I want to, in particular, focus on the eviction prevention work that's funded in this budget, and how it's actually a cost savings. This has been studied. I'm really excited about the rent assistance and the eviction prevention work that's in this budget. In my day job, we do this on the ground, we see the impacts this, this has every day. This has been studied in Philadelphia. They projected, for every dollar that they spent in Philadelphia on eviction prevention, they saved $12 in other costs to the city of Philadelphia. So it's actually a cost savings. You're, you're preventing things like homelessness, which are extremely expensive to fund on the, on the far end, not to mention the devastating costs that they have to people's lives. Prevention costs eight to 12 times less than homelessness supports and stabilization efforts. A person experiencing homelessness costs between $30,000 to $50,000 per year, while eviction prevention mediation costs an estimated $1,200 a year. With rent assistance, it's about $3,000 a household. So there's no question that that is a better use of dollars, and it also is, once again, impacting people's lives. The other thing I wanted to say is I'm a member of Sharpsburg Borough Council, and we also have a tight budget, and we got to make difficult decisions like the ones you're making. Our borough is 3,000 people, our median income is somewhere around $40,000 a year. I think we do a pretty great job with limited resources and staffing, but what I want to emphasize is that all of our little boroughs all across Allegheny County depend on a highly functioning Allegheny County to do what we do. We need a high-functioning county government with capacity to deliver programs, services, expertise, economic development tools that help our little borough succeed, expand its tax base, support small businesses, provide resources and supports to our most vulnerable residents. If you don't invest in the county, you will instead pass the buck to scrappy little boroughs like ours, who don't have the resources to fill that gap, and we don't have a planning department to pick up the slack, to ensure we're revitalizing our brownfield sites and our riverfront. We don't have the infrastructure and the capacity, let alone the resources, to administer home repairs and rent assistance and eviction prevention programs and on and on. So, you know, I just want to stress that you're also investing in little boroughs like ours that really depend on a high-functioning county government to do what we do. That's what a good, healthy partnership looks like. Thank you.
Thank you. Angelica? Christine. Thank you. Rosa Maria?
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm Rosa Maria Cristello. I am a resident of District 3, and I am the founder and executive director of the Latino Community Center, which serves Latinos all across Allegheny County, a population which you've heard has grown by 80% in 10 years, helping stabilize the region's population decline. I ask you today to vote yes on the county's executive budget and help keep the doors open for all family centers and out-of-school time programs. Our organization operates the Latino Family Center, which serves over 1,500 families with children 0 to 5, helping them specifically raise healthy and happy children through evidence-based programming, like parenting classes, maternal health support like Hello Baby, and home visiting support. We also run our after-school program, which serves 45 children in Beechwood Elementary School, year-round, including the summer. In addition to this, our organization goes above and beyond helping families navigate systems like the school districts, all 43 school districts. We are actively working to support and build up the workforce of the future by ensuring
Hi, Christine Kelly, otherwise known as Kelly Kelly, as some of you may know. I am a very proud 20-year homeowner in Turtle Creek Borough and also served as the former mayor in Turtle Creek Borough, but tonight I'm here to speak as Director of Public Safety and Well-being at Connect. Connect is a nonpartisan nonprofit serving local governments in southwestern Pennsylvania, representing over 900,000 residents in Allegheny County and the city of Pittsburgh. I'd like to express my support for the proposed Allegheny County budget and praise its continued investment in innovative public safety programs. One of them is the Law Enforcement-Assisted Diversion Program, otherwise known as LEED at Connect. This trailblazing program, through collaboration with the University of Pittsburgh, Allegheny County Health Department, and Department of Human Services, has proven to be a transformative force in our first 16 municipalities. LEED offers a compassionate and effective alternative to traditional criminal justice responses for individuals struggling with mental health and substance use disorders. In Allegheny County, we have witnessed firsthand the positive impacts of LEED. By diverting individuals from the criminal justice system and connecting them with appropriate treatment and support services, LEED is helping to break the expensive cycle of addiction and incarceration. With our continued collaboration with the Allegheny County Department of Human Services, we aim to sustain and expand the program for future participants. Investing in programs like LEED is a sound fiscal decision. By addressing the root causes of crime, LEED reduces the long-term costs associated with incarceration, healthcare, and emergency services. Furthermore, by fostering collaboration between the legal system, law enforcement, healthcare providers, and social service agencies, LEED strengthens our communities for our region. Because of LEED, Allegheny County has recently been recognized as a national leader in public safety, and I urge you to support the proposed budget so we can continue to be the best in the country. Thank you.
Rain? Rain? Kara?
Good evening. My name is Kara Petrowski. I'm a resident of District 1, and I'm here representing Boys and Girls Clubs of Western Pennsylvania. When making hard decisions, I look for inspiration to guide my approach and think of an impactful quote from Mr. Rogers. "We live in a world in which we need to share responsibility. It's easy to say, 'It's not my child, not my community, not my world, not my problem.' Then there are those who see the need and respond. I consider those people my heroes." For more than 135 years, Boys and Girls Clubs of Western Pennsylvania has worked alongside Allegheny County to provide critical support for our region's children, families, and communities. Our shared commitment to uplifting those that need us the most has been the cornerstone of our mission, but this commitment is now at risk. The DH funding on the chopping block supports our region's most dire challenges that impact all of us, and the solutions lie with the many providers that serve as heroes, many of whom are here today. A budget reduction of this magnitude would cause irreversible harm to thousands of residents who rely on these lifelines, as well as organizations like Boys and Girls Clubs, who would have to make the most difficult decisions that will have drastic impacts on our kids, our families, and our community. County Executive has proposed a 2.2-mill tax increase to address this challenge, and as one of many organizations supported by Allegheny County, Boys and Girls Clubs urges county council to approve the proposal and secure the resources our community needs. The budget is the engine that drives transformative change in our communities. For Boys and Girls Clubs, each year of funding from Allegheny County contributes to providing safe spaces, mentorship, and career pathways for more than 7,500 kids across 18 locations. It allows us to address the mental health crisis affecting our kids and to ensure young people have the tools they need to thrive academically, emotionally, and socially. These programs not only benefit the children, but it also provides parents and caregivers with a safe place for their children while they work. Without these resources, many youth and families in our community would face greater barriers to success, putting their futures and our region's future at risk. The consequences of inaction are too dire. Cuts of this magnitude would not only lead to loss of jobs and services, but also an increase in disparities that are already making life challenging for those that have been through so much. The tax increase will allow the county to continue delivering the essential services and make our community safer, stronger, and more resilient. I'm proud to call Allegheny County home, and we are leaders, we need our leaders to step up across as heroes and make necessary investments in our future, as lives are truly depending on it. Please won't you be our hero?
At this point, we have about 110 speakers, which roughly, if everyone's here, is going to put us into the 1 o'clock hour. So I'm going to encourage you to try to be as brief as possible, because I know a lot of people still want to speak, and I don't want to see people leaving here at midnight or 1 o'clock, because public transportation isn't that great at that point in the morning. So we need to try to, I'd like to try to expedite this as much as possible. So can we call the next five, Sarah?
The next five are 61, Donald Brightbarth; 62, Amy Colick; 63, Maggie Rothenberger; 64, Andrea Boikowitz; 65, Belkus Torres.
My name is Don Brightbarth. I'm a homeowner, and I live in District 11. I'm also the Secretary of American Federation of Teachers, Local 2067 at CCAC, and a few weeks ago, our President, Dr. Bullock, was here to deliver his annual budget request for CCAC, and I'm here to speak in support of that request. Over the past two budget cycles, thanks to you, county funding for CCAC has increased. As you recall, the Community College Act of 1963 calls for our sponsor, Allegheny County, to contribute 1/3, or 33%, towards CCAC's operating budget. And here's the important part, the act also says that students and their parents should never pay more than 33% towards the operating budget. The request that Dr. Bullock submitted a few weeks ago has students paying only 32% of CCAC's operating budget. That same budget request has Allegheny County paying about 29%. That's a huge improvement over two years ago, when our students' tuition accounted for almost 40% of CCAC's operating budget, and the county paid only 25%. Working together, we have taken the burden off to students and their parents. Equally important, though, this shift in funding formula has provided more money for student supports designed to increase student enrollment and retention. For example, increased funding from the county has allowed us to provide more high-quality, free tutoring, more bus passes for students in need, more laptop loaners for students who can't afford them, and through a partnership with Allegheny Health Network, we have been able to expand mental health services to all of our campuses and centers, to mention a few. Your willingness to invest in CCAC, our students, and by extension, all of Allegheny County, is making a real difference. When Dr. Bullock was here in October, he provided the proof. He highlighted how, after a few slow years coming out of COVID, enrollment at CCAC is starting to move back in a positive direction. Equally important, our students' retention, meaning students who persist from fall to spring and from year to year, is also starting to improve. Again, this is because of your leadership and your willingness to invest more in the community, and I'm here today to encourage you to do the same this year. I'll close by saying that we were heartened to see that County Executive Enamorado, unlike her predecessor, also believes in investing more in community resources like CCAC. Her proposed budget is a reflection of that. It's the responsible thing to do because it's the right thing to do, and we encourage you to follow her lead. Thank you.
Thank you.
Margaret Rothenberger. I'm in Bell Acres, District 2, but I'm here tonight as the President and CEO of Partners for Quality, which is a parent organization of five local nonprofit agencies that support people with intellectual and developmental disability, along with behavioral and mental health challenges. I am here to represent two of those agencies, Milestone and Allegheny Children's Initiative, both of which rely on county dollars to meet the needs of people and families they serve with these particular needs. While our agencies serve more than 4,000 people throughout all of Allegheny County, our administrative office is based in Council President Patrick Katina's district. In this day and age, mental health is as important as physical health, and I'm here to ask you preserve our services in the support of the 2.2-millage increase. Because of all of the people here tonight and today, I'm going to go off script. However, our agencies will not be able to support 550 families and will lose approximately $2 million, and this does include we are supported in the match. I am not a Pittsburgher. I'm actually a transplant from the southeast region near Philadelphia. I've been here for five years. In addition, I wanted to let you know that I was educated very early on by many of you Pittsburghers. I was told that here in the western region, we take care of our own. It is very different out here than in the cities, and it's very different now. I was also made aware of how the steel industry had to change, and the previous leaders of Pittsburgh decided to set a new strategic vision for Pittsburgh in technology and medicine, and here we are. As part of that, there was infrastructure build, not only 576, along with the airport restructure. We are in there with the idea that we are going to be able to bring in new businesses along with other services. I have something here to say to you on a higher picture. The 2025 U.S. Open is going to be here in Pittsburgh, Allegheny County, along with the 2026 NFL Draft. It is clear that if we don't continue to preserve all of these programs, these events are not going to go as planned, and you have to remember that the vision of Pittsburgh is not just about today, but the next 50 years and what we're trying to build. Thank you for your time.
Not here. Belkeys? Belkeys? Belkey?
Not here.
Belkey?
Not here.
Arthur? Arthur? Oh, you're Arthur? Okay.
Want to line up the next speaker?
We're going to take a break, like, after this one, to give the stenographer a chance.
Hi, my name is Arthur Teeman. I live in the Squirrel Hill area, so I believe that Paul Klein is my representative. I heard about the meeting from Pittsburghers for public transit, but I'm just some guy. I rode the bus here. I'm going to be riding the bus back home. I'm asking you all to support the 2.2 million budget to be passed. I especially want it to fund the discount fare program for all food stamp homes. Passing this budget would ensure also matched funding for transit from the state. I use the bus every day to get to work. I'll be honest, you don't want me driving to work each morning. I don't want me driving to work each morning. I really like taking the bus. If you build and maintain the public transit system, we will use it. We will use it. I'll just end with sharing some of the faces of people I ride the bus every day with, people who maybe weren't able to make it here tonight. I have a lot of non-driving friends that I moved up to Pittsburgh here with, specifically because it's a city where we could get around without a car. I ride the bus with my blind and disabled coworkers. I ride the bus every morning with very sleepy kids who are going to daycare or going to school. I ride the bus with their even more sleepy parents who are kind of getting them there. I ride the bus with a lot of college kids, a lot of grandparents, lawyers, business people. I ride the bus with my neighbors. I understand that there's about 171 speakers for public comment here tonight. If we all are going to drive home in the rain alone tonight, that's 171 of us on the road, but if we could all have reliable buses that we could take, that's six buses. Thank you.
At this point in time, we're going to recess for 15 minutes and give everyone a chance for bathroom breaks. So, thank you, everyone. We'll see you back in 15 minutes.
We're going to go back on the record, ladies and gentlemen. I think we're on number 67, Samantha Potter.
The next group is 67 Samantha Podner, 68 Talia Newman, 69 Josh Small, 70 Jocelyn Crowell, 71 Lindsay Ramsey, 72 Gideon Sirisus, 73 Casey Brown, 74 Patrick Francis, 75 Caitlin Christian, 76 Ellen Weiner, 77 Nicole Rosito, 78 Briann Francis, 69 Will Allison, and 80 Rabbi Moishy Mayer Vogel.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I want to first put it in the record that it's super hot in here, just so that's recorded for the room. My name is Sam. I live in Oakland. I'm a student at Pitt. I'm also a lifelong Pittsburgher. I'm from McCandless. And as a student, I rely very heavily on county-provided services, especially public transit. I took a Port Authority bus here. I've also worked in the Public Defender's Office, and I care about the social safety net services that care for some of our most vulnerable residents. And I'd like to say that the cutting of these critical services, as many people have talked about tonight, would be absolutely devastating. As I get closer to graduation and continue where to move and start my career after college, I want to live in a county that supports me in building a thriving life here, and that includes support for first-time home buyers, that includes improvements to infrastructure, revitalization projects, sustainability investments, and public transportation. I want to live in a county that takes care of all of its citizens and properly funds these critical services. We are worth investing in here. An austerity budget that neglects Allegheny County residents would drive away valuable graduates like myself, negatively impacting the county's future growth. I strongly urge the council to support County Executive Enemorato's proposed 2025 budget, complete with its proposed tax increases. Thank you.
Thank you.
Talia, Josh, Jocelyn, Lindsay.
I'm Josh. Again, my name is Josh. I live at 10 Oakland Square. I'm a student at Pitt. I'm originally from Virginia, but I came to Pittsburgh because I wanted to study urban planning in a great city with a good future. I'll keep my thoughts brief. I'm in favor of this new budget because we know that the age-old fallacy of government degrowth is not the answer to our problems. We need to empower our government to help people, and that should start with helping the people who need it the most. This budget does exactly that. I love Pittsburgh, and I love everyone that I've met here. I want to live in a city that invests in people and doesn't leave them behind. Investing in the city means investing in the future. So with that, I ask that you again, please support the new county budget. Thank you.
My name is Lindsay Ramsey. I'm the executive director of Shady Lane School. We are strategically and very importantly located right at the end of Wilkinsburg, serving five very diverse communities, those being East Liberty, Point Breeze, Wilkinsburg, Homewood, and Regent Square, which children and families all pile into our building every day and create a level of community. So I am a strong advocate in the early childhood field, and I know many providers, and we have a group chat. And the potential risks in losing funding scared us all, and it definitely made the group chat. And we were very excited and fortunate to learn that childcare subsidies were being protected. But in that same breath, we realized that other programs that support our children and our families weren't being protected. Every single day, I serve families from children from six weeks to six years old and families for those children who need support services, whether that be coming directly from a family support center, which provides crucial work to our families and communities that are most at need, whether they need busing, housing assistance, we even have had staff that have experienced homelessness. And if we risk losing those programs for our community, then that's going to hurt some of us. And if some of us are hurting, that means all of us are hurting. So moving forward, as we look forward and push to the future, I would appreciate us passing the 2.2 millage to help support those programs that support others, but also to help create a better future for children and families moving forward. Because if we don't do that now, and if we don't support the investment now, we will certainly certainly pay for it later, whether that be in violence, whether that be in homelessness, whatever impacts our communities in the most negative way, that's something that's going to be far more of a cost, not only financially, but in the matter of social impact. So we thank our county executive for pulling together a budget that keeps in mind the progression of our communities, and we hope that you all push that forward.
Ben? Not here? Casey Brown?
Good evening. I'm filling in for Gideon, who couldn't be here today. My name is Bennett Sakai Johnston. I live in Oakland District 10. I'm currently a sophomore public health student at the University of Pittsburgh, and originally from Virginia. I'm here to support the budget. Reading the budget highlights, I came through a troubling fact. The total assessed value of properties in the county has declined for the first time in many years. What does that mean? It means Pittsburgh isn't doing a good job of attracting people to come and live here. This leaves us with an opportunity, though. We can influence the demand for people to live here, or specifically, we can help young people like myself and people, my friends here, stay in Pittsburgh. I have a suggestion. Sue, pardon my pronunciation. Are your ties happiness? We can actually look to the small country of Bhutan for inspiration. When the country started to open up in the 1990s, the King Bhutan was asked many things by the international community.
Unknown participant is now joining.
Cool. He said, he was asked, what's your gross national product? He said, we have gross national happiness. But how do we have gross national happiness in Pittsburgh? How can we improve our gross national happiness in Pittsburgh? We increase our social infrastructure. We support the development of social connection. Why does social connection matter? Because mental health and social connection impact our health. The United States is facing what the Surgeon General, General Vivek Murthy, is calling an epidemic of loneliness and social isolation. It was found that in his report, loneliness and social isolation increased the risk of premature death by 26% and 29%, the same as smoking 15 cigarettes a day. Pittsburgh is emerging from two eras, the COVID-19 era and the Rust Belt era. As Pittsburgh emerges from these two eras, rebuilding social connection in our communities offer us a promising and hopeful way forward. Hope in the way that thousands of Poles, Czechs, and Slovaks came to Pittsburgh for work in the steel mills, seeking a better life at the beginning of the century; hope in the way that thousands of young college students like myself will stay in Pittsburgh if we prioritize happiness and prosperity at the beginning of this century. Pittsburgh's hands is in the future of us, young people, our careers, the lives we will live here, the families we'll raise. Thank you.
Thank you. Casey Podner?
Casey Brown.
No.
Casey Brown, Patrick Francis, Caitlin Christian, Elon Weiner, Nicole Rosito, Brienne Francis.
Hi, my name is Casey, and I am a student at Pitt, graduating soon in Oakland. I'm here to speak in favor of the budget change. As I look to the future, Pittsburgh is a place I would love to live. And why wouldn't I? We have four nursing homes. We protect survivors of domestic abuse. We have a great public transportation system. We have beautiful parks and affordable housing. But with a $148 million deficit coming to our county next year, let's not kid ourselves. The great services that made my time here great and make me want to live here after I graduate are on the line. You want to grow the county? You've got to face the reality that a slight increase in taxes is needed to prevent sweeping cuts to healthcare parks and even policing. That's going to drive people like me away from the county. It's going to drive people, like thousands of students at Pitt every single year that graduate out of the county. It's going to cause people like me to look at it and say, all right, I'm going to Philadelphia, I'll move to Chicago. There's nothing for me here in Pittsburgh. Government doesn't care about me. Our opposition, by the way, has not proposed a bill, because all they have are concepts of a plan. Don't even get me started. Without the passage of this bill, our county will go from one on the up and up to, once again, being a shrinking, bankrupt, and completely dysfunctional Rust Belt county. We're going to say no to that, and we're going to embrace a future where students like me can see an opportunity to build lives and build families here in Pittsburgh. Thank you.
Patrick, Caitlin, Elon, Nicole, Brienne, Will, Rabbi Moishy? Moishy?
Good evening. I'm Pat Francis. I am from Shadyside, South Highland Avenue. I am a Pitt Law student. I went to Pitt for undergrad, and with love for city and county, I decided to stay for Pitt Law School, and I hope to stay in Pittsburgh well into the future. So the main reason I'm here tonight is because I heard, mostly through Twitter, a lot of horrifying narratives about the budget, and I was called to come speak. This is my first time I've ever been to one of these meetings, and voiced support for the proposal. Using college terms in particular, I am here tonight to ask what $15 means to you. As you all know, but others don't, $15 is the median increase that the average homeowner would face. $15 notably is less than the cost of a burger and fries. It's less than the cold medicine I bought a couple weeks ago, and it's actually less than the cost of a Netflix subscription. However, for $15 a month, we can work to reduce urban blight, encourage business growth, and, of course, of special interest to me, help support future homebuyers in Allegheny County. Also, I would like to be a prosecutor for Allegheny County, and when we invest in spaces for our children, our county's children, to thrive and grow, well, I think that $15 investment is far better now than having to prosecute them in the future. It would make our community safer, and our community better, and our community happier. And all of this is possible for the cost of Netflix. And so I think that the $15 is better spent betting on Allegheny County, and I hope that the council and all of the great people here who I admire, who have spoken tonight, move forward with unity and pass this budget, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. Caitlin, Elon, Nicole, Brienne, anyone's here? Okay. Will, I know I saw, oh, okay. Please say your name.
Good evening. My name is Brienne Francis. I currently live in Scroll Hill, but I've been a resident of Allegheny County for most of my life. I'm a sophomore student at the University of Pittsburgh, studying both political science and economics. As an economics student, I can tell you the best thing we can do with our money is invest it, so why is it a question that we shouldn't invest in ourselves, in our county, in our home? When you come from wealthier communities, it's probably hard to understand why programs that respond to low-income issues are important, but you haven't been forced to see them firsthand. I went to Steel Valley High School. When there, you could have kept your lab partner's parents out of jail because of these diversion efforts. You could have kept a childhood friend of mine from being shot in an alley on the night of my senior prom by gun prevention issues. You could have kept kids in school without their drug problems when you actually helped them and funded their services. How can we expect children to continue to want to live here, go to college here, start a family here, and make good-hearted change here when you are not investing in them? I'm a member of a volunteer fire department, Mon Hall 200, and we're completely volunteer-run. Why should we continue putting our lives on the line when you don't even want to give us the money to fund the emergency services that dispatch us? How do you expect me, someone who wants to start a family here, to do that and send my kids to school when there are no mental health services or community college options? Voting against County Executive Enamorato's budget would help make dreams a reality for so many people, it would be a failure to your constituencies. If you vote against this budget, will you personally be the ones consoling families that lose their homes when they have to give up their homes because they cannot afford childcare? Will you be the ones calling family members of senior citizens, telling them that they will be forced to find alternate housing for their parents because you shut down their nursing homes? Will you personally be the ones coming to a crime scene or a structured fire because the police and fire departments can't come because you took their funding away? Will you be those people? You will not. You will punt it off on everyone else, and it will be our job to pick up the slack as your citizens. What benefits one part of Allegheny County benefits us all, including public services that work in a county that we can be proud of. I urge the council to make the right choice and invest in the future of every single citizen of Allegheny County, no matter what they are here for, no matter where they work, no matter where they come from. And I'd like to remind each and every one of you that if this budget does not pass, students like myself will make sure that every single citizen of Allegheny County knows who voted for it and who voted against it.
Will?
Good evening, council members. My name is Will Allison. I'm a recent graduate of the University of Pittsburgh and a resident of District 10 in Pittsburgh's Oakland neighborhood. I'd like to begin by thanking the council members who've attended tonight and who are actually listening to us. I know it's going to be a long night, so thank you all for showing up. I'm here today speaking because I would like to stay in Allegheny County. I'd like to build a career here, buy a home here, and raise a family here, but if our local government is not funded, I won't be able to feasibly do that. You've heard quite a few students speak today, probably more than the average county council meeting, but there is a reason for this. Every single one of us, many of us from other states or other counties, want to build a life here, but if the budget that will actually fund our schools, roads, bridges, nursing homes, parks, and most of all, our police and our public defenders, is not passed, it will be incumbent upon us to leave for places that invest in their residents. I earnestly ask who among this council can look at our region today and say that the issue is too much investment, private or public? Who can say that too much is being done to attract graduates rather than too little? I do not own property today, but I hope to soon, and when I do, I will be more than happy to pay just a few dollars more per month for bridges that don't collapse, elections that are the envy of the Commonwealth, and a 911 service that responds. Today, I'm asking all of you to put ideology and factional politics aside and to vote for the pragmatic and necessary budget soon to be put before you that will allow us to move forward as a county. Above all, I am begging you to allow myself and others a future here. My parents were forced to leave Pittsburgh for greener pastures as part of a pattern I'm sure everyone here is familiar with. I beg you today not to force many of us to have to do the same. Please vote in favor of the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, can the next eight speakers please line up? Rabbi Vogel, Jada, Lorne, Denise, Brandon, Veronica, Dorothy, Anastasia.
My name is Rabbi Moishy Mayor Vogel. I'm with an agency called the Aleph Institute in Pittsburgh. For the last 34 years, we've been providing resources for those incarcerated reentry programs as they get out of prison. In addition to that, we provide a food pantry, which offers 168 families the wherewithal to take food, mensch lechite, with dignity. We have an after-school program, and we have a motherhood centers, which offers these families a place to go to and resources in the community. These programs are heavily funded by the county, by DHS, and I ask you to please support them and don't cut them. You can't give a rabbi a microphone without holding it for a little longer. The Torah portion this week today tells us, as Rebecca comes to fill up a canister with water, and there comes Abraham's right-hand man, Eliezer, he comes to fill his camels that were thirsty, had gone through the desert, and he needed to fill some water and give them what to drink. This Rebecca fills her water, sees these camels all thirsty, and she says, let me go and give the water to the camels they should drink. And God says, here's a lady who cares for others, even for animals. She's appropriate to be a matriarch of the Jewish people, of the community. I turn to you, please be a patriarch, fund the programs that need funding. Thank you.
Good evening, esteemed members of our county council, and those of you who have waited here so patiently to tell your stories about the importance of passing the county budget. My name is Jada Sherrell. I'm an Allegheny County resident, homeowner in District 7, taxpayer, parent, longtime human services employee, and I'm also the chief executive officer of a nonprofit organization called Healthy Start. The organization that I have the honor to lead, Healthy Start, was incorporated as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit 34 years ago, after our county health department and concerned citizens felt that it was necessary to bring a unique, community-based approach to Allegheny County to address infant death. We serve in a unique but universal capacity. There are few community-based organizations addressing family supports, education, policy, research, training, and workforce development specifically to support healthy pregnancies and postpartum vitality. I am sure that you would agree on the critical and universal importance of maternal and infant health as a foundation of family and community health and well-being. Again, this is a universal concern, and I'm sure it's in the interest of all of ours. Healthy Start directly serves over 1,200 families per year with individualized, community-based supports. We assess mental and physical health, food access, intimate partner violence, and community safety, housing security, parental skill, and child well-being. And remember, we are doing this during the critical time of pregnancy and postpartum. Our impact can be summed up in a few words: life after labor and first birthdays. We help usher women and birthing people through pregnancy, childbirth, and the first year of life and beyond. For the last four years, we've also received county funding to expand our reach and impact to families who have very, very complex social needs and who also have new babies via the Hello Baby program. Our work with families in their homes and home communities relies on keeping our human services infrastructure intact. The health of mothers birthing people and babies relies on keeping our human services infrastructure intact. And the health of our communities relies on keeping our human services infrastructure intact. Whether or not you use or perceive to use critical county services, such as out-of-school time programming, behavioral health supports, childcare, senior services, and housing, tens of thousands of your neighbors do. The impact and magnitude of community destabilization and job loss that comes by way of potentially not approving the requested 2.2-mill county real estate tax increase far outweighs the cost to residents, even in this economic environment. This is a matter of investment in our community and our people, and I ask you wholeheartedly to approve the budget.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Denise McGill Delaney, a resident of Allegheny County and a homeowner in Wilkinsburg. Do you know someone that needs safe spaces for their youth to attend after school while their parents are working? Do you know someone who needs a summer camp to attend over the summer? Do you know someone who needs mental health services and can receive that from a nonprofit? Do you want to reduce the unemployment rates if we're able to maintain our employees that are employed through us? Do you want to provide a healthy workforce as we provide workforce development services? If you answer yes to any of these questions, I ask that you stand and unite with me to pass this millage. As a resident homeowner of Allegheny County and a long-term employee of Gwen's Girls for 22 years, I feel it's imperative that we pass this property tax increase in an effort to mediate the potential cut. The cut is a threat to Gwen's Girls and other vital programs that serve thousands of vulnerable residents, including the family support services, youth programs, behavioral health care, and other services within the nonprofit sector. We recognize that the well-being of our families is intertwined with the priorities in the county's budget, and that's why we are here asking you to vote yes. The health and well-being of our communities are counting on you.
Thank you.
I'm Kathy Elliott, the CEO of Gwen's Girls, and I'm yielding my time. I'm number 114, and I am in support of everything that Denise just said. Please support this policy and the budget, and it's necessary. You all know it's necessary. Let's do the right thing.
Thank you. Thank you.
First of all, thank you for the opportunity to be able to speak, because those of us in here, we are boots on the ground. We are the ones that are with our children. I am Pastor Dorothy Stubbs. My zip code is 15207, New Evangelistic Ministries Community Health Initiative in the surrounding Allegheny County area. I want to remind you that I stand in agreement with all of them. Why? Because we are saving lives. We are keeping hope alive. We are the ones that put the tools in the hands of those who may have skills, who may not have skills, and some of us have an opportunity to have therapists and some of us don't. So some of the organizations, that's what they do. They put the tools in the hands for people who may not have an opportunity. Here it is. All of our kids are affected. Our babies. Computers are raising them. They're in their rooms with social anxiety. Amen. They're in their rooms. They're angry. They're depressed. They're cutting themselves. So the help that our kids don't get, it's coming to a neighborhood near you. So let's don't get that messed up, that we're all affected. All of our kids have issues. Let's save all of our babies. And you may not even know what your kids are dealing with until they end up with somebody in here. Are they able to come to one of us so they feel like they have to get the help from their parent that their parent can't give them? Because we can't do everything. So I'm reminding us today to fund the solution and not incarcerate the behavior and get with the root of the behavior. Because what are we going to do? We're going to lock everybody up? What I'm saying to you today is to be a part of the solution and not a problem and fund the increase. Thank you very much.
All right, Anastasia, Jennifer, Yedira, Jasmine, Michelle, Angelo, Kellyanne, Roberta. If you guys can all line up in order, thank you. Anastasia, are you here? Jennifer Morris, are you here? Yedira Garcia?
Hi, my name is Yedira Garcia. I am a first-generation college student currently attending the University of Pittsburgh. I have been a resident of Pittsburgh for the past 10 years, specifically District 13. I'm here to ask you that you please vote yes on the county executive proposed budget. My family and I relocated to this city in search of a supportive Latino community within Allegheny County, one that could assist us with educational opportunities, access to healthcare, and help us build connections with other Latino families. The Latino Community Center has been significant in supporting my family and me during our transition to Pittsburgh. Not only did they connect us with Spanish-speaking healthcare providers, but they also played a critical role in my educational journey. I would not be a student at the University of Pittsburgh today without the resources and guidance provided by the Latino Community Center. During my first year at the university, I faced significant academic challenges, ultimately leading to my academic dismissal. At that point, my parents and I faced the LCC for help, as I was determined to continue my education but uncertain how to move forward. The LCC worked tirelessly with me to create a path for my success, helped me enroll at the Community College of Allegheny County and connecting me with individuals who facilitated my reinstatement at the University of Pittsburgh. The support I received from the Latino Community Center was crucial in ensuring that I could continue my studies. Without their assistance, I don't believe that I would have been able to overcome these obstacles and continue my academic journey. I am deeply grateful for the vital role the Latino Community Center has played in my life and in the lives of many others in our community. I urge the county council to recognize the importance of such organizations in fostering educational and community success for Pittsburgh's diverse population. And I ask that you please vote yes on passing the county executive budget proposal to keep organizations like the Latino Community Center open. I also have a quick statement from one of our other speakers who couldn't make it today. My name is Andrea Peraza, and I live in District 12. Today, I'm here to help my community and explain why after-school programs are important and to ask you to vote yes on the county executive proposed budget. My brother attended the Latino Community Center, SOI PGH, after-school program in Beetroot Elementary School. This program helps him with understanding and doing his schoolwork and has helped him grow as a person and has also helped him to make friends. I have seen how this program has helped my brother and his friends to understand how their new school works. In many cases, it helped him navigate their school as they are learning English. SOI PGH and many other after-school programs are not daycares. They are more than that. They are safe spaces for our kids to be, to grow, and to learn. SOI PGH provides them the feeling of a community while also preparing them for the future by helping them learn how to do math, read, and more. I don't know what we would do without the Latino Community Center after-school program. So I urge that you please vote yes to the county executive proposed budget. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
I'm Jasmine.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jasmine Perkey. I'm a resident of Penn Hills, so that is in District 7. But I am here today as a senior family development specialist at the Steel Valley Family Center, which is located in Homestead, and we serve families in Districts 11 and 9. I'm here to advocate for the passing of the county budget with the proposed 2.2 mil tax increase to ensure full funding for the Department of Human Services and the essential services provided by family support centers. Every day, I witness the transformative impact of these services on our community. Family support centers are more than just a resource. They are lifelines for the 16,000 families across the county that family support centers serve. We provide critical programs, including early childhood education, parenting programs, food and housing assistance, and other vital resources to families. These services empower families to navigate challenges and build stronger futures for themselves and their children. The need for these services has never been greater. Families in our community are facing rising costs of living, housing insecurity, and increasing food scarcity. Without adequate funding, we risk cutting back on essential programs that many families depend on just to make ends meet. A fully funded budget would ensure that we can meet these growing needs and continue to provide the comprehensive support families deserve. Investing in these programs is also an investment in our county's future. Research shows that high-quality early childhood education and family support services lead to better educational outcomes, reduce healthcare costs in stronger communities. For every dollar spent on these programs, the return on investment is undeniable, not just in economic terms, but in the lives we touch and the futures we help shape. The proposed 2.2 tax mil increase is a small price to pay for ensuring the well-being of our neighbors. It is a commitment to the families who rely on these services and to the values of compassion and community that define Allegheny County. I urge you to pass this budget as proposed and ensure that we continue to meet the needs of the families we serve. Let's show that Allegheny County prioritizes its people, its children, and its future. Thank you.
Michelle, Angelo, Kellyanne, Roberta, and Monique, Nicole, Laura.
Hello, my name is Kellyanne Fruchetic. I live in Elizabeth Township, which is District 9, and I'm here as a resident, and I'm urging you to support the 2.2 millage increase proposed by County Executive Inamorato. It's necessary to fund the Allegheny County budget. As an employee of the Greater Pittsburgh Community Food Bank, I know the importance of these programs and the impact that it has on our communities and the people that we serve. Part of my job at the food bank is I create what are known as CSFP boxes. It's the Commodity Supplemental Food Program, which is for our seniors. I have the pleasure of controlling and managing the inventory, determining what goes in the box that then goes out to our seniors, not just in Allegheny County but in surrounding counties. I firsthand see how we help people, and it is imperative that we keep our program funded. Allegheny County is our region's single-largest funder of human services. Its budget provides critical resources for our county's most vulnerable residents. Our human services provide networks, and our human services workforce. Importantly, through the Department of Human Services, the Allegheny County budget supports hundreds of organizations to deliver services not just ours. As someone who cares deeply about food insecurity, I am also asking that you protect the Allegheny Go program that provides discounted transit fees for discounted transit fares to available SNAP participants. At the food bank, we know the deep connection between food insecurity and other basic human needs like housing, transportation. If critical human services are cut, I'm deeply concerned that food insecurity will increase dramatically for our neighbors as they face impossible choices between food, housing, childcare, and more. Please vote to pass the budget with the full 2.2 mils increase and protect our county's vital human services. Thank you for your time.
Okay, Roberta Kacinco.
My name is Roberta Kacinco. I'm from District 11, and I have been a parent involved in the Steel Valley Family Center for over 15 years. Today, I am speaking not just as a parent, but as someone who knows firsthand the impact these programs have on families in our community. I am also honored to serve as the president of the Steel Valley Family Center Parent Council, and I believe it's my responsibility to speak up for the families who depend on these services. I support the proposed 2.2 mil tax increase in the budget that is necessary to fully fund the Department of Human Service and Family Center programs. Without it, families like mine and maybe even yours could lose their support. We rely on the small increase as an investment in our children of Allegheny County and the future of our community. Family support centers have been a lifeline for many families and over 16,000 other families throughout Allegheny County. They help parents like me find support, resources, and connections that make raising a family just a little easier. These centers provide early childhood education, food assistance, parenting classes, and even help with housing. These programs don't just help families survive, they help us thrive. Over the years, I've seen so many families in our community grow stronger because of the help they receive at these centers. But I've also seen the challenges when funding doesn't meet the needs. Families are left waiting for services, and critical programs are at risk. We all want the same thing for our families: a safe home, food on the table, and a chance for our children to succeed. Fully funding these services ensures that every family can build a better life. I urge you to pass the budget as proposed by the county executives. Let's stand together for families of Allegheny County and make sure these programs are there for our families in need, them now and for the future. And because of the family center, I was able to adopt an eight-year-old child. Thank you for listening.
Ann Weaver, Ann Weaver, Monique McIntosh, Nicole Thomas, Laura Bosnak Thompson, Akeah Jones. Sorry, wrong Laura. I meant to tell you when I saw you stand up. I'm sorry. You guys?
You are.
Do we call your name?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Hello, good evening. My name is Ann Weaver, and I'm in District 1 at 214 Park Avenue. I would like to thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to speak today, to express my concern about the budget, as I'm here to give the budget support. I began my career over 25 years ago, working in the mental health field. I have a wide range of experience, which include working at residential programs for adults with persistent mental health diagnoses, case management for nonprofit organizations, working in homes with individuals with intellectual disabilities, and working with individuals that have been involved in the criminal justice system and also have been diagnosed with mental illness. A common description for almost every job I had, almost always have the same requirement: assessment of clients. While doing the assessments, some of the stories I would hear were horrific, filled with child abuse, neglect, poverty, and homelessness as children. I often wondered, how were those early life experiences affected by individuals, and why weren't there more programs to help? Fast forward to my current job at DHS. Through my employment, I have learned of all the wonderful programs out there to assist families. At DHS, we are fighting homelessness, working to ensure that families in the community have somewhere they can go to, such as family centers, that they can assist with diapers, formula. They can link the community with job opportunities. These centers can also provide social activities as well. They give the community members a sense of self-worth. We must invest in the well-being of families now if we expect to have healthy generations to come. Let us also not forget that if this budget does not pass, our seniors will be at risk as well. In closing, when considering whether the budget proposal is passed, which I hope it does, please make sure that our decision is based on what we value most in society and not based on political affiliations. Thank you.
My name is Akeah Jones. I moved here from New Jersey, me and my family. I am a member of the Claritin Family Center. They do a lot. I'm so happy to have them in my life. They take the kids on trips. They provide diapers for my baby. They provide formula. They put in referrals for families that need assistance. They put in a referral for me to help fix my car so I could stay working. I work for visiting angels. I take care of elderly people. Please support the bill. Thank you.
Allison, are you here? Okay, going forward, if we call your name, please line up in order, the next 10. Guillermo Bieros, Aaron Allen, John Katz, Sidney Davis. I know Dr. Elliott already spoke. Angela Dandridge, Malaya Kirkland, Juan Perez, Shane Gardner. I'm a resident of beautiful Bethel Park, a member of Pittsburgh United, and I also work with Pittsburgh United, leading the canvassing efforts in Allegheny County. I'm here tonight with my colleagues and comrades to give my thoughts and comments in support of County Executive Inamorato's budget proposal for the upcoming year. It shouldn't come as a shock to anyone in this room, or the many people who weren't able to fit in this room, that the county is facing some pretty challenging financial decisions ahead with the federal COVID aid ending and the decrease in the tax base across the county, and dealing with the lack of foresight from the previous administration. For some, it may seem pretty easy to approach this discussion with the idea that austerity or cuts across services is the best way to get a handle on these issues. In fact, there are some council members who have gone public with such ideas. Some of them might not be here. But I would urge council to remember that austerity measures do not work for people. They have been shown time and again to actually shrink the economy and hurt the people and children of our communities, especially the most vulnerable among us. What we need is a county government that has a clear plan to invest in the people of Allegheny and protect the services that they rely on. Yes, it is important to end the structural deficit, and yes, it is important to set Allegheny County up for a more sustainable financial future, but not by cutting core county services or threatening county jobs. We get there by making investments into our communities and giving them what they need to thrive and grow, as the county executive's proposed budget does. In my job, I go door-to-door quite a bit and have talked to so many people out in the community about taxes, county services, and what they think about them. The most common sentiment I hear from people is that they don't mind paying The most common sentiment I hear from people is that they don't mind paying a bit more in taxes, if they're able to see them being put to use in their neighborhoods. The answer isn't to cut services. The answer is to invest into the people of Allegheny and show them that together we can create a better county. Our communities deserve to have county leadership that has a vision forward for the county, and I believe that the budget proposal put forward by the county executive does this by fully funding the county services that so many people use and need, from investing in county infrastructure, to keeping people in their homes, county health services that so many people rely on, and making childcare and after-school programs affordable. I urge you all to vote yes in support of County Executive Sarah Inomorato's budget proposal, and commit to making the responsible investment into our communities. Thank you.
John, Sidney, Angela, Malaya.
Hi, I'm John Katz from Pittsburgh 15217. My colleagues and friends that have spoken tonight already have heard 100 very important reasons that I'd like everybody to please support the county executive's budget as proposed with the 2.2 mil increase. But I'm going to speak about housing because that's my experience. I serve as president of Brandywine Communities, a property management firm that owns and manages apartment complexes throughout Allegheny County. We take care of about 3,500 apartment units in almost all of the districts that are represented. Budgets are far more than numbers. They're moral documents that reflect our values as a community. Few values are more essential than ensuring that our neighbors have access to programs that help to keep themselves and their families safe. This proposed budget will increase my taxes, and I'm here today to strongly support it because it prioritizes critical programs that safeguard the health, stability, and dignity of some of the county's most vulnerable residents. We're in the midst of the housing crisis. Since last October, landlords in Allegheny County have filed over 14,000 eviction petitions. While we don't know how many of these families will become homeless, we do know that keeping people in their homes is not only the right thing to do, it's fiscally responsible. On average, it costs $4,500 to support a family through eviction prevention programs. In contrast, rehousing a family after they become unhoused can cost as much as $50,000, over 10 times the cost of prevention. Thanks to the dedicated efforts of housing advocates, nonprofits, and county officials, Allegheny County has become a model for the Commonwealth in creating effective systems to keep residents housed. The proposed $14 million investment in these programs will help nearly 4,000 households remain in their homes next year. This $14 million isn't just a line item. It represents hope, stability, and security for thousands of our neighbors. By supporting this budget, we affirm that Allegheny County stands for compassion, equity, and justice. I strongly urge you to pass this budget as proposed and continue protecting the residents of Allegheny County. Together, we can ensure that every family has an opportunity to remain in their home and to thrive. Thank you.
My name is Malaya Kirkland. I'm 19. I'm here to represent just one of many independent living foster youth transitioning into adulthood, trying to be the change I want to see for the youth that might need it. Although, I don't have many statistics as you well-knowledgeable adults, but I do have lived experience and proof that these DHS-funded resources work and are vital for a better future for kids like me. It all starts with the employees of a resource hub called 412 Youth Zone, represented by Arborley. This zone offers many benefits, such as obtaining vital document, permits, driver license, and therapeutic services. They also take many young adults on college tours. Without a chance to see other things, we won't know what's out there for us. DHS also supports YAB, DHS Youth Advisory Board, which I joined nearly three years ago. Our experiences have been even used in training other parents and caseworkers. DHS funds the employment of education liaisons who encourage independent living and secondary education. I was a truant student feeling lost. Now, today, I am a CCAC student going for social work. Lastly, DHS also funds Action Housing, My Place Program, which provides stable housing for youth aging out of the care. They also teach vital life skills that each young individual will need as they progress in life, like budgeting, investing, saving, and more. As you can see, all these different resources are vital to the development of young adults like me. Please invest into our DHS funds because you may be holding back an emerging leader or a caseworker's drive to help a child in need. I believe that the 2 mil tax cut would save a child's life and prepare a future leader for success. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Sidney Davis. I am the founder of an organization called Artist Talk Mental Health, centered around Black artists in the city. We do artistry development, professional development, but most importantly, we get to provide free group therapy for artists in the city. Tomorrow will be marked our three-year anniversary of doing this work in the community with artists through our cohort programs, our panel discussions called Black Therapy 101, and our community conversations. So through all of those programs and the work that we do with the community, I've heard a lot about what artists need. People think it's paintbrushes and canvases, but artists need housing, food, and mental health support, and safe spaces to go to in the community to grow. Basically, what it boils down to is basic human needs. As a community leader, we do our part to help find solutions for our community, but it truly takes a village. We often lean on one to three other organizations within the community just to help one artist. At the core of our work, it's really about creating ecosystems with these other organizations that you're talking about stripping support from. I want to keep our ecosystem and our support system alive. Last month, we got a proclamation passed for Suicide Prevention Month, along with other mental health organizations like Still Smiling and Positive Paint Project. City council members asked us how they can support us in celebrating this month, and taking care of our community, and bringing awareness, and making a true impact to support our community. Passing this budget is how. This is how you can help support our community. Our community leaders and nonprofit founders and executives, and all the people that we work with in the community, we're already on the brink of burnout by just trying to support basic needs within our communities. We're constantly trying to find ways to put things together to take care of our people. So this lack of funding, I truly believe, that's being taken away, will break us. So I'm just here to ask you guys to help us help our people by passing the budget.
Yes, sir. Hi, I'm Juan Perez, District 12. I'm fortunate enough to work for the Urban League and oversee three family support centers in Duquesne, Northview Heights, and East Hills. First, I want to thank all of you for being here. I know it's a long day. I know this is hard work, but you all look like roll-up-your-sleeve-type people, right? And it's one of the things I fell in love with the city of Pittsburgh. It's full of roll-up-your-sleeve-type people who takes care of their own. And that's what we're doing, right? Through the Urban League and through our family support centers, I've been fortunate enough to be a part of roll-up-your-sleeve-up work. But there's some things we take for granted that our families simply cannot, such as a birthday party, right? Celebrating the joy and celebrating our young people, some of our families can't afford to do those things. So through programs such as Beverly's Birthdays, we provide thousands of children with birthday parties, right? I don't want to live in a city where we can't celebrate our children. Some of the things that we take for advantage that our families simply cannot, providing diapers, providing formula for our children. Diapers and formula are some of the most stolen items throughout the country, not because Americans are deviants, but because Americans simply can't afford them. I don't want to live in a city where we can't provide those basic essentials for our children. And lastly, one of the things that we take for advantage is our wives, mothers, and daughters going to the hospital to give birth and coming home healthy, happy, and alive. Our families simply cannot. The mortality rate, especially for Black women, is skyrocketing, and right now, it's already at epidemic proportions. But programs such as Hello Baby that provide resources, provide education, they provide ways for our young mothers to come back home alive and healthy with their children. So because of these things, I ask you to roll up your sleeves with me. I'll be there side-by-side with you. Call me. I promise you, I'll be there. But let's roll up our sleeves because none of us want to live in a city where we can't provide for our children. None of us want to live in a city where our fathers are burying their wives and their children, because that's not one of the things that make Allegheny County and the city of Pittsburgh one of the most livable cities, not only in the country but in the world. So I implore you to vote yes, so we can roll up our sleeves together and make sure we provide all these things for our families that deserve them. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Shane Gardner?
Yes, how you doing? Yeah, I'm doing good. How you doing? I'm tired. I'm just here. My name is Shane Gardner. I come from New Jersey. I came with my family. I got four girls. With the family center, Clerton, only father there. They do a lot. They did a lot of... When my car went out, they gave me bus tickets to get to work the whole time, to get my kids back forth to school. They took my wife back and forth to the hospital for her doctor appointments because we didn't have no transportation because our car went out. They signed us up for the footbridge program so our car could get fixed. So now, we got our car back, so now we back on the road. They do trips all through the summer for the kids. Lunch, anything, anything, anything you ask them for, they give it to you. And I'm not just talking about just Clerton Family Center. It's all the family centers. The family center just ain't just, oh, yeah, you just go there. Their transportation, their food bank, they give diapers, they give wipes, they give anything you need. They gave me my first car seat for my baby and stroller. That's what we need in Pittsburgh. We don't need... Oh, they just... We don't need that. We need people like the family centers and the sources we got around here. Without them, we nobody. We nobody. We all ain't millionaires. We all don't make all that type of money. Y'all, please, please say yes to the funding. We need the family centers, just like the other profits out here. We need all of them. But thank you. I'm going home and go to sleep.
Xavier Littlejohn, Deeksha Suresh, Shannon Wanless, Jawanna Warren, Brian Bayer, Thomas Berensen, and I know Bennett spoke for number 72. So are any of those people here? Yeah? Go ahead.
Hello, everyone. I'm Dr. Shannon Wanless. I'm faculty at the University of Pittsburgh School of Education and Executive Director of the Office of Child Development. As Dean Farmer said, I'm speaking as myself as a concerned citizen, not on behalf of the University of Pittsburgh. I am here to talk to you about the power of prevention sciences. As you've heard from others here, the beautiful stories of compassion are moving, so I'm going to try and supplement them by reemphasizing the return on investment and how much easier it is to solve a problem when it is small rather than later on. So our Office of Child Development has been working with family centers for decades, and the reason we continue to be there and support them, I'm texting with our staff that work with them right now, the passion is there, but because it is the way that you change lives for the long term. The return on investment of programs like family centers and other programs that are on the chopping block right here range conservatively from $3 to $26 for every dollar you invest, although there are economists who talk about workforce productivity and say we need to double those numbers. So if you're not moved by the humane argument here, which I think is pretty obvious in this room, it is the only fiscally responsible decision on the table to invest in prevention and not cut all of these very needed services. I'll also say, I've only heard a couple of people mention tonight something I just recently learned, that each one local tax dollar unlocks four more dollars in state funding. That means when we put forth $1 contribution, $1, we're able to unlock a total of $5 for prevention services. That should be embarrassing that we are leaving that many dollars on the table unused, that that is out there, ready to hand and serve our children and families, and we're not figuring out how to financially make that happen, seems insane to me. So I am here to ask you to please vote for the 2.2 mil tax increase. Prevention saves lives, it saves dollars, it's the right decision to make.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for still being here with us. My name is Deeksha Suresh, and I am a home visiting family coach with Hello Baby Family Checkup. I work with the Center for Parents of Children. I moved to Pittsburgh from India with a clear purpose, to serve families in need. And this role is more than just a job, it's my calling. Every day, I see firsthand the struggles that come with raising children, and I see the spark of hope in struggling parents who are given the right tools and support. I've witnessed the transformative impact of programs like Family Checkup, how they help families break cycles of trauma and create brighter futures for their children. Family Checkup is effective because it is rooted in prevention. My colleagues and I meet families where they are, leading with their strengths, and the research, it's pretty clear. Early intervention is key to improving child outcomes. Home visiting programs like Family Checkup have been shown to improve parenting practices, reduce child maltreatment, and lead to better long-term health and educational outcomes for children. And I'm guessing that's what they all want. The work can intervene even in moments of crisis. I have witnessed, in one instance, active domestic violence while I was visiting a family. The situation was volatile, and the safety of the parents and children was at immediate risk. And my role is not that of a crisis counselor, but I was able to step in because Family Checkup puts us directly in families' homes, where we can see the warning signs and prevent things before things spiral out of control. I was able to offer immediate support and connect parents to resources they need through Hello Baby's supportive networks, and that made all the difference. We reduced risk of further harm. This is why prevention is the ultimate form of harm reduction. And home visiting programs like Family Checkup is designed to address challenges before they become crises. And none of this would be possible without ongoing support. If these programs are cut, we risk robbing families of that hope. Most families will be left vulnerable without support. It's a small price to pay, $15, to pay for the future of our children, our families, and our community. To end in a personal note, I am here in a work visa, fully committed to this community and its families. I contribute not only my time and energy, but also my heart and soul to the work I do. I'm a taxpaying resident of this county and this country, deeply invested in its community. The upcoming budget decision could determine my ability to remain here and to continue my work. Your vote carries the power to shape not only the community's future, but mine as well. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for staying, and thanks to all the audience outside. My name is Jawanna Warren. I'm in District 6. I am the Senior Site Director at the Clerton Family Center, and I want to come from my heart. I was a family at the family center. My children are 34 and 32 years old. I had an FDS who came to me and supported me with getting a job, doing a resume, giving me support. I was in a bad spot. I was in a domestic violence relationship. Through that, I have been with the AIU for 32 years. This program works, and I'm not just saying that because I worked there for 32 years, I'm saying because it worked for me and my family. It's a strength-based program. It's needed. We don't have a lot of programs in Clerton, and the Clerton Family Center and all the family centers do tremendous work. I could not see our communities without these programs in them. Our children need it, our families need it. We brought families down here today. They spoke, and they did so well, and I'm so appreciative. My staff is here. All our staff from the Allegheny County, we're here. We want you to know that these... We want you to know that these programs are truly, truly, truly important. We need that budget to be passed, we need that tax increase. And I thank you so much. I sit on the school board at Clarendon, so I wouldn't imagine having a meeting this long. So hats off to you guys, hats off to you. I know you have big decisions to make, and I appreciate what you do. Everything you do is not, it's not looking in vain. So hats off to you guys, and please think about the families in Allegheny County.
Good evening, council members and fellow residents. Thank you for giving us all this opportunity to speak at this critical juncture. My name is Brian Bayer, and I was raised here in the north hills of Allegheny County, and I am now proud to be a homeowner here in the city's south side. I currently work as a financial consultant to nonprofit organizations in the region, a role through which I have seen in real numbers the incredible impact of the county's support on all of our neighbors. I'm speaking tonight to implore you all to support the full 2.2 mill increase proposed for the county budget. Let's not mince words. Raising the millage rate will increase my annual taxes. That will make my family's budget a bit tighter, and with a newborn, that's not something I take lightly. But owning a home in what I consider one of the most beautiful counties in this country is a privilege, it's also an investment. And this is our opportunity to look at our community and say to each other, yes, we are worth it. The cost of living certainly strains residents' budgets, but the services that Allegheny County provides through a sustainable, well-balanced budget, which is staked on fair taxation of its residents, is a necessary counterweight. Our council has a duty to make sure that the essential services that keep life affordable in this region are provided, and I urge you to take this opportunity to move the county forward and leverage your vote in favor of a budget that provides services for all. It is irresponsible for our council to overlook the financial implications of not supporting the increase. In the short term, a daunting list of county services will be shuttered, but the long-term effects of this decision are hard to quantify. What happens when after-school programs that provide safe spaces and nutritious meals to kids close? When ice-covered roads prevent our seniors from getting to urgent care? When the parks are no longer maintained recreational spaces? The county has not raised taxes in over a decade, and pandemic-era funding artificially inflated the revenue, but here we are, facing the deficit that was always imminent without an increase. No one cares for the taste of taxes, but they are the effective tool that savvy representatives can responsibly leverage to offer dignity to us, the residents. The bottom line is simple. There are two options: either balance the budget with this increase or compromise on a lower increase, knowing that it will decimate essential support services and necessary support for all 1.2 million residents. So I'll ask just one question: are we worth it? Thank you.
Thomas, are you here? Okay, next line, if y'all could just line up in order. Ariadna, Anna, Martha, Rachel, Brian, Anna, Genevieve, Gabriel.
Hello, my name is Ariadna Wright. I'm from Creighton, PA. I'm here today to urge you to vote in favor of the 2.2 millage increase. I'm urging you in favor of this due to the fact that without this increase, a resource that I, amongst hundreds of other Allegheny County residents, utilize would be at risk of having their doors permanently closed. That resource is the AIU family centers. The family centers have helped me and my family immensely and has impacted our life for the better. I have been with this family center since my son, right here, was a newborn, and he's three now. The Highlands Family Center has helped me by providing diapers for all three of my little ones. Without this family center as a resource, I would be struggling much more. They helped me get my children into the AIU Head Start Program and have provided my family with food and have even given my children clothes when needed. Being able to go to the center for their family events and parent-focused activities, knowing that I can trust the people that work there around my kids, and to watch my kids for the time set aside for parents to have some me-time, has been great. I also have a family development specialist that does home visits twice a month, who's absolutely amazing, and she's here today. My kids love her and the family center. My oldest daughter, who is six years old, asks frequently, "Mommy, when is the next time we're going to the family center?" If there comes a day where I have to tell her that we can't go there anymore because they're closed, it's going to break her heart. And as a mother, I do everything I can to spare her from hurting, and that's why I'm here speaking today. The last thing I want to say is that the family center isn't just helping me and my family, but hundreds of other families with children's ages 0 to 18. They provide so much and even offer additional services such as food pantry, diaper and formula banks, healing from addiction, families in recovery programs, housing assistance, referrals, tier trauma education and response, and even transportation. Taking away all the family, taking away all the family centers wouldn't be helping Allegheny County, it would be severely hurting Allegheny County. Please don't take the family centers away from the many people who are in need of their resources. Please allow them to continue showing love to the families in Allegheny County by keeping them funded.
Hello, my name is Martha Sherlock, and I'm originally from Honduras. I moved here to Pittsburgh in 1989. In 2001, I became a United States citizen, earning my right to vote, and I do vote. I am the Site Director for the Family Immigrant Connections Program. I started my journey with this incredible organization as a parent seeking support and resources for my family. Over the years, with the help of programs like Family Center, I have grown personally and professionally, working my way up to Site Director. Today, I am here to advocate for the passage of the Allegheny County budget, including the proposal of the 2.2 mils tax increase. Family Immigrant Connections serves families who face unique challenges, including limited English skills and adjusting to life in a new area. For many of these families, our program are lifeline, who help parents navigate a school system, access healthcare, and secure essential services like food and housing. Most importantly, we provide a sense of belonging and connections in new and sometimes overwhelming environment. The proposed tax increase represents a modest investment in the future of our county. Programs like ours not only support individual families, but also strengthen our entire community. Children in our program do better in a school, parents become more confident and engaged, and new residents feel welcome and empowered to contribute to Allegheny County. I have seen firsthand how these programs changed life because they changed mine. Fully funded, DHS Family Centers ensures that other families have the same opportunity for stability and success that my family had. I urge you to pass this budget. By doing so, you are investing in families and diversity and the strength of Allegheny County as a whole. I want to share this. My coworker, Anna, was supposed to speak today, but one of the families was in crisis and called the center that she didn't have enough papers to last until Friday payday. So I said, "Well, hurry up so you can make the meeting." And that day, she delivered the diapers, and then she fell when she was coming out of her house. She hurt both of her wrists. She couldn't be here today, but she wanted to speak. So those are the type of services that we do. We are in crisis or losing our funding, but we still continue to serve our families in Allegheny County. So thank you for your time.
Yes. Good evening, thanks for your time. My name is Brian Mack. I am the Executive Director of The Open Door. We are a youth outreach center in Crafton Heights in District 12. I have lived in Allegheny County for nearly my entire life. As a child, I benefited from the programs of the service of The Open Door, which I am now running. I've been a homeowner in Allegheny County for over a decade. I am here today to express my support for the proposed budget and the 2.2 millage increase on our property taxes. I never saw myself as someone in favor of higher taxes, but here I am. As a proud Yinzzer, I am glad to live in Allegheny County and to brag about our great city. The turnaround of the greater Pittsburgh area over the decades has been inspiring, but we still bear the scars of when businesses, fortunes, and the economy have failed us. When the mills began to close, thousands were forced out of work with no safety net. Many of my neighbors in District 1 and District 4 are former United Airlines employees who lost their jobs and their pensions in 2002. When COVID shut down our city, I was working at the Greater Pittsburgh Community Food Bank, and we served miles of people in cars waiting for food. We've been able to bounce back each time, in no small part because of the social and human services in place in our county. If this budget is not approved, not only do many of the services that make our county so livable go away, but you would then be responsible for over 1,000 of our neighbors directly losing their jobs at the county, countless more losing their jobs at the programs that the county supports, like my own, and over 25,000 of our neighbors losing access to essential services. At The Open Door, our goal is to serve children and their families, to offer them a safe place to learn, to play, and to grow. Every weekday, we host an after-school program for elementary-age children, with over half a dozen different groups and clubs offering enriching activities to children of all ages throughout the week. We also host a six-week summer camp for over 60 children each year. All of these programs are provided at little or mostly no cost to any of these children. We've been fortunate to have received a contract through DHS to help facilitate our programs. This grant makes up over 60% of our annual budget and has allowed us to run these programs, hire staff, and continue to grow. Should this budget not pass, we would face a deficit that would be met in one of two ways. We could cut our programming, offering less to these children, lay off our staff, cut our team in half, and try to make all of our programs run and hope that the volunteers and the money roll in. Or we could begin charging for our programs. To offset the cost of our summer camp alone, we would need to charge the children, the families, $750 per child. For the families of Crafton Heights, where the median home value comes in just under $100,000, the choice is an additional $15 a month in taxes, or losing or needing to pay for the services at The Open Door, in addition to losing many other services provided by other organizations in our neighborhood. The choice is clear: keep Allegheny County as a county that we are to be proud of, one where we care for our neighbors, support those in need, and pave a way for an even brighter future, increase the property tax by 2/10ths of a percent of a home's value, and save our services.
I thought I left public speaking behind in college, but here we are. Sorry, y'all. My name is Rachel Collins-Struck. I am a homeowner in Monroeville, so 15146. I want to thank the council members for your hard work and dedication to your constituents. So I am here as a voter, a property taxpaying constituent, and a consumer and provider of many of the services that will be drastically cut if property taxes are not appropriately raised. The fact that we have not had a property tax raise in 13 years means that we need drastic action right now. Without a 2.2 mill raise, which averages to $15 per month, homeless services will be cut. My brother is homeless in Allegheny County and relies on these services to receive support, especially with temperatures dropping. Though he doesn't pay property taxes, he pays income taxes. Without homeless services, he will have no hope of getting stable housing, even with a job. Without a 2.2 mill raise, cuts to programs such as 911 services are at risk. Imagine calling 911 for your own loved ones and being put on hold, or having to wait longer than necessary for fire or police help. We have all needed these services. My neighbor is a paramedic and has been instrumental in keeping in touch with elderly people in our neighborhood who call 911 and at-risk people such as my brother. It's not his job to follow up, but he does. Your lack of action to increase property taxes to ensure he can do his job effectively puts my entire neighborhood at risk, not just his job and livelihood. Without a 2.2 mill raise, cuts to family support centers across Allegheny County will be devastating. Families rely on these centers to build communities in places where family supports are unwilling, unable, or unavailable to support biological family members. You will be taking this program away from thousands of families, including myself, a person who will use the service to build my own village where none exists currently. You will be telling me that my village, because it isn't biological and isn't self-sufficient, isn't worthy of support. Without a 2.2 mill raise, you will cause cuts to children, youth, and families that provides vital services and investigations for children suspected to be abused or neglected. You will also cause cuts to their preventive programs, and you are taking these services away from children in my community that need it, including what could be my future children. Without a 2.2 mill raise, you will cause severe cuts to the county-wide initiative Hello Baby. Not only am I a provider for Hello Baby, but I am someone who would qualify for Hello Baby services for a multitude of reasons. As a constituent, you are taking away these services from myself and thousands of others just like me. With all of that said, without a 2.2 mill raise, you will be telling me, a currently pregnant and truly single parent who has waited two decades and sacrificed financially to have a child, that my village isn't worth $15 a month and can be taken away at any time. Sorry. I had a little bit more.
Hello, my name is Genevieve Barby Turner. I live at 5117 Carnegie Street, 15201, in District 13. I'm just a resident and a third generation in my family that is a business owner. My grandfather, Carl Toholsky, owned a funeral home on Carlisle Street near Trona Heights. My mother actually left the region in the late '70s for greener pastures, but I came back, and I have studied, worked, and lived in Allegheny County since 2003. I chose to stay after graduating from Carnegie Mellon University because in 2007, I saw a future for myself here that I now enjoy with my husband. We own a home in Lawrenceville, and I run my illustration business in McKee's Rocks. In the 21 years that I have lived here, Allegheny County showed me that when we invest in ourselves and take care of our own, we thrive. This budget is an investment in the future of our county and all of its residents. We cannot look to anyone else to bail us out. I'm worried that not passing this budget incurs a much greater cost: the job losses in healthcare for seniors, public safety, the lack of Main Street investment, the lack of support for affordable housing, and so much more that we have heard here today. It is alarming to me. For families like mine, the cost is comparable to a streaming service, as people have mentioned, like Netflix, and like the nice one that you don't get commercials with. I would much rather put that money into my community than a corporation. I am currently coaxing my mother to come back to Pittsburgh, but I can't do that if we don't make this a county that is not fit for people to age in. It's one of my goals to also be buried here, so I would like to age here as well. David and I support the 2.2 millage increase. When this passes, the only thing that I ask is that the county take time to show us what our self-supporting effort has yielded. I think when people can make the connection between that $15 and seeing their community thrive, they are proud to say, "I am a part of this effort." I even brought my wallet, so I'm ready.
Hello, my name is Gabriel Denalden. I am a resident of East Liberty and also a youth at the 412 Youth Zone. The 412 Youth Zone is a branch of Aubrelly, which is 100% funded by DHS. DHS is the thing that keeps this going. This is a place where people 16 to 23 who are transitioning out of foster care, dealing with unstable housing, or homelessness, go to receive essential human services. I would know firsthand, because one year ago, I was homeless due to years of domestic abuse. I was forced into homeless shelters where I was miserable, I was surrounded by drugs and people who wanted the worst for me. The only reason I am standing straight and without a needle in my arm today is because of the 412 Youth Zone. Almost every day, I would stop to their downtown location, and I would receive support, advice, and understanding from trained professionals who actually cared about my well-being. This is a scenario where I had a 1% chance of coming out with my head above water, but thanks to the Youth Zone, I was able to not only surpass it, but thrive. This is a place that provided, this was a place of refuge for myself and many others who have endured as much as I have and more. This is a breath of fresh air that is so needed. And even after I overcame homelessness, they provided me with opportunities to help me save money for a car, they helped me with housing, they helped me enroll in trade school, and much more. And I am by no means an outlier. I am one of hundreds of people who have either currently experienced it or have achieved everything I have and more. This is one of Allegheny County's greatest assets, and their reward right now is that they are on their deathbed. If this DHS budget is not fully funded, it is going to close. All the care, all the guidance, it is done. Many people complain about the rampant homelessness in downtown, they compare about the crime, and they compare about all the negative things that come with that. This is what stops it. The 412 Youth Zone is that intervention that is needed. The 412 Youth Zone is that intervention that is needed. But I get it. The property tax is a hard pill to swallow. It hasn't been raised in over a decade. You don't want it. This is going to cost the median homeowner $15 a month. That is the same as Amazon Prime. This is something that is very much needed. There is hurt that cannot heal on its own. There are deep pains that don't go away, and the only way to heal these deep cuts is to bandage the wound. The 412 Youth Zone is that bandage. Fund DHS fully. Keep the Youth Zone open. The youth and young adults around Allegheny County are depending on it. Thank you.
Arnetta, Kaylee, Medina, Janet, Michael, Harmony, Yvette, Paula. If I called your name, please line up and speak. Guys, we're getting through it. We are on number 134, for anyone who's counting at home.
Hi. I have not read this ad yet.
All right. Hi. I'm Kaylee Grooby. Thank you all for your time this evening, council, and thank you all to the dedicated staff who stayed so late for us so we could discuss the critical need to increase our mill 2.2. I'm a proud homeowner in Verona, which is in District 7, and I'm also privileged to be the Executive Director of Allegheny Clean Ways. But personally, I'm someone who also grew up in a low-income household with a disabled father, and we relied on social benefit programs. So I've seen firsthand how these investments create lasting positive change, and I deeply believe in the investment in virtuous cycle, I deeply believe in the virtuous cycle that social investment can create and break cycles of poverty. I want to quote Margaret Thatcher, who once famously said inaccurately, "There is no such thing as society. There are individual men and women, and there are families." This perspective emphasizes individualism and isolates us from one another. In contrast, our hometown hero, the groundbreaking environmentalist Rachel Carson, reminds us that the world is shaped by rich ecosystems. It's interconnected and interdependent systems where every individual affects the whole society. Carson's work taught us that just as nature is a web of relationships, our communities too are ecosystems, where our collective health and well-being depend on how we invest in and care for one another. At Allegheny Clean Ways, every day, we work to eliminate illegal dumping and litter all across this county. And while litter might seem like a surface issue, the reality is much deeper. Communities burdened by trash and illegal dumping suffer from higher rates of mental health struggles and violence, and these problems disproportionately impact low-income neighborhoods and communities of color. Leveraging the support of thousands of volunteers, we've removed over 7 million pounds of trash thanks to the help of consistent investment by the Allegheny County Health Department. And each tire, we've removed, we're on track to remove 6,000 illegally dumped tires this year, which left, if left untreated, could breed tens of thousands of disease-carrying mosquitoes. That would equate to about 65 million mosquitoes this year alone, helping us prevent the spread of diseases like the West Nile virus. So on behalf of all of those Allegheny Clean Ways serves, I urge you to support the 2.2 mill increase. We haven't heard a single naysayer here tonight, so I hope that you see this as a slam dunk opportunity to serve and protect our community. Thank you.
Hello. I want to thank you for your time. I know it's late, so I'm going to keep this short and sweet, because I like to talk when the window's up, but I won't do that tonight. All right. So my name is Medina Godlock, and I'm a homeowner in Mon Hall and a Site Director at the Duquesne Family Center. As both a homeowner and a professional, I urge you to support the proposed 2.2 millage increase that would save family centers and other DHS programs that protect our families and children. In a nutshell, our services are a safety net lifeline and cornerstone for Allegheny County's most vulnerable families. Tonight, I'm here to represent one of the families. I had one here, she had to leave unexpectedly, so in true family support form, I'm going to read a statement that she left for you guys. She says, "Hello, my name is Levasia Lee Ravis. My family and I use the resources and everything the Duquesne Family Center offers. If it wasn't for the center, my four-year-old daughter wouldn't be where she is at today. You see, she has autism, ADHD, and sensory issues. She has been considered non-verbal since age two and a half. Because of the family center and everything they offer, my child is now in school, she is talking, she is engaging with other children, and she is thriving. She is excelling as they help her grow and become more independent. As a mother, I have good and bad days, and good and bad times, and they help when I can't afford diapers or food, or just to support myself. They help and they care. This program saved me and my kids in so many ways. It's so amazing to feel like I have a village, but without them, I have nothing. So, council members, if you could find it in your heart to support the proposed budget of an increased 2.2 millage, it would continue this program not only for my kids, but for kids all over the, excuse me, all over the county, and parents who might not have all the resources that they can use. If it wasn't for the program and its foundation to help build a safer, smarter, and more hands-on community, I don't know where I'd be. As you see, family centers are DHS services, and DHS services are truly lifelines." Thank you.
Skews the lack of eye contact, I finished editing this 10 minutes ago. Also, I'm nervous. My name is Harmony McDonald. I am a born and raised renter of Highland Park. I am also an upcoming student at CCAC and hopefully a future student of Pitt and Pitt Law. I've come to speak in favor of passing the county budget as proposed. For almost two years now, I've worked for Rent Help Pittsburgh as a Court Resource Navigator on the Lawyer of the Day team. Our program listed plainly on the budget proposal, seeks to provide rental assistance and no-cost legal advice and representation to renters facing eviction. Today, I would like to share a personal story of mine and my life where I was in desperate need of those services but did not have them. In fall of 2021, I was physically assaulted by an immediate family member. The assault resulted in the city of Pittsburgh taking this individual to magistrate court and me filing a protection from abuse order. I quickly realized that I was extremely ill-equipped. I did not have the knowledge necessary to provide a sound legal argument for myself. My abuser had an attorney present for both cases. I could not source my own attorney, not for lack of trying, but I was provided one at the Court of Common Pleas for my PFA case. I was advised by my abuser's attorney and the magistrate judge to withdraw from the case so that I could move on with my life, as they put it. I was told by both of them that withdrawing from the case would have no effect on my separate PFA case. It was presented as the best option I had, and without legal representation, it felt like the only option I had. That action, unbeknownst to me, would later serve as a defense for my abuser on the PFA case, and as a result, I had no choice but to accept a six-month temporary PFA. Not only did the entire experience leave my mental health in shambles, I ended up eventually quitting both of the jobs that I had. One, because it was too close to my abuser's residence, and soon after, I quit the other because I simply did not want to be alive, let alone work. I am still dealing with the trauma of that time in my life as I speak to you today. Had I been provided an attorney at the magistrate level, it is possible that the legal outcome may have been the same. It is as equally possible that I at least wouldn't have been left feeling so ignored, tricked, and abandoned by the system, that despite the violence and callousness I faced against a person who was supposed to raise and protect me, I could still rely on the people of power within my city to look after me and provide me with vital services in my most vulnerable moment. Please allow me to continue being the person that I wish I had back then. The people I interact with every day are scared and confused, much like I was three years ago. The only thing that diminishes that fear is the team of attorneys and resource navigators I work with and our presence in the courtroom, doing everything in our power to keep them housed. Somebody experiencing eviction or any legal dispute cannot provide adequate legal representation to themselves and should never have to. Services like the Lawyer of the Day program prevent tenants from being taken advantage of and prevent predatory landlords from profiting off of their ignorance. Our stats are proof that this work is actually serving a vital need within this county, and I look forward to more opportunities where I can celebrate our results with you all. But I really wanted to use my time today to talk about the invisible good that this budget would provide. A sense of pride in everyone in this room and everyone watching at home, knowing that when we can not rely on ourselves, we can rely on our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Yvette Sanboy, and I work with Casa San Jose in the youth program. So thank you so much for having me here. First, I want to start with this phrase. This program celebrates diversity while addressing systemic barriers, creating opportunities for Latino children to succeed. I also brought four fundamental pillars that represent our programs. The first one is the positive impact on Latino youth development. Program designed for Latino youth provides essential tools and knowledge to help them succeed academically, professionally, and personally, often bridging gaps caused by the systemic inequalities. This program celebrates and affirms Latino culture, fostering a sense of identity and pride while encouraging community engagement. Investing in our programs helps reduce risks such as school dropouts, risky behaviors, and mental health challenges in a community that often faces unique barriers. The second one, return on investments. The Latino community represent a significant and growing part of the workforce. Investing ensures they are equipped to contribute to the economy and their communities. The third one is building stronger. The programs that focus on Latino youth help cultivate leaders who can give back to their communities and advocate for others. Many families benefits greatly from Casa San Jose programs as they provide a safe, educational, and culturally-affirming space to their childrens. And the last one, addressing equity and opportunity. Latino often faces systemic barriers such as language access, economic disadvantages, and underrepresentation. Programs like this level the playing field and ensure equal opportunities for all. And I want to close with this. By supporting our Latino youth today, we're strengthening not only their future, but the future of our entire community. Thank you so much for your attention.
Paula? Paula Miranda here? No, Paula. Paula? No. Okay, next group. If you could line up by the podium. Bobby, Gary, Mallory, Dennis, Levasia, Jade, Blaze, Coley, Margaret.
What do you mean, Bobby? Good evening, council members and council president and concerned citizens. My name is Gary Nelson, and I come to the meeting tonight representing the Bible Center Church located in Pittsburgh's Homewood neighborhood. I serve as Bible Center's Director of Operations and Ministries, and Bible Center is not your typical church. We are, in fact, a church that is intentionally functioning as a social impact entrepreneurial catalyst. We serve over 150 students Monday through Friday through the school year, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. through our out-of-school-time after-school program. So, and during the summer months, we serve over 100 students and their families. During that time, we provide education, activities that includes homework assistance, meals, STEAM education, science, technology, engineering, agriculture, and math, and we provide safe door-to-door transportation for those students and families. These students are also exposed to opportunities they would not normally have access to without the services we provide through Bible Center and Oasis Project programs. We also fund and form an informal mental health program called the Chapel Project, and we provide world-class early childhood education, leveraging over $700,000 in DHS reimbursable funding. These funds also enable us to employ over 70% of our 70 full-time and part-time staff. The services provided by Bible Center's programs and ministries liberate parents to enable them to work, which contributes to the county's tax base. It provides financial assistance to over 80% of the parents in our early learning center. And for these reasons, I urge you to support funding fully, the full 2.2% millage increase in the property tax rate, so we don't abandon the most vulnerable in our community while seeking to appease the most prosperous among us. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Dennis Floyd Jones. I'm the Executive Director of Youth and Enrichment Services, and I must say that I'm a little disappointed that my councilman spent this afternoon learning how to pronounce his name, Katina, and District 4 is not here. I wanted to meet him, so giving my best. But, you know, for the past 30 years, YES has served over 6,000 youth ages 10 to 24 through its year-round programming. As an organization, it is our mission to provide socially, economically at-risk youth the opportunity to achieve success through participation, mentorship, education, and enrichment programs, operating on the ethos that no child is disposable. Our vision is to empower youth and their communities to become their own best resource. YES prides itself on providing youth of color particularly opportunities to explore, challenge, and rewrite the dominant narratives that have been thrust upon them. Since 2000, though, YES has been a court-funded juvenile diversion program. Diversion 2000 is a pre-adjudicated mentoring, monitoring, and detention alternative program that was developed in collaboration and funded by the Allegheny County Department of Human Services, Allegheny County Juvenile Probation, to address the over-confinement of children 10 to 18. Our diversion program participants are co-ed who are vulnerable to societal delinquency, risk factors, struggling to with below-par academic achievement, and lacking sufficient support systems to prevent recidivism prior to adjudication. Through the diversion program, it has been our goal to prevent youth re-entry and further entry into juvenile justice system, issues that influence the youth to expose the abundance of negative environmental influences that instill in youth and the notions of self-worth. Since its inception, though, our diversion program for 24 years has served over 3,500 youth through our diversion extended program. We've saved Allegheny County taxpayer over $1 million that YES has been able to occur because we've kept the kids out of secured detention. In addition, YES has also begun to develop preventive measures that work towards reducing youth further persistence in the juvenile justice system, even being referred. Through the solution-based and distorted practice approaches, YES has worked to equip the necessary social literacy skills to navigate these contexts and environments. We're here today to express our support for the county executive budget proposal, the impact that our youth-serving agencies have on the teens' families, and they're impactful, they are impactful and very sometimes immeasurable. As a small community-based organization, we have partnered with over 65 other agencies, sharing resources, leveraging each other's networks, building platforms, bridges for our youth to enjoy a multitude of services through the tight network we call Collective Impact Partnerships. Speaking on behalf of YES, numerous partners and within our agency, we emphatically encourage you to strongly consider supporting the work that these nonprofit organizations like YES do. Much of that work is thankless. It's grunt work. It's day-to-day grind, but it helps keep families together.
My name is Margie Thompson, and I live in Carrick, which is Paul Klein's, one of his districts. Last time I was here, I shared a story of triumph and how my family directly benefited from rental assistance, but today, I'm here with a different message. Yes, I am affiliated with Rent Help Pittsburgh, but today, I am here as a county member who is tired of taking crazy pills. Are we really about to just sit here and act like this shouldn't be past 100%, like we're really coming here like Moses came to the Pharaoh, begging and pleading about how each of our jobs, how each of our families are going to be greatly impacted, and you, and some people, Bob Macy, are actually going to vote no? Like, what are we doing? We all know how that story ends. The Pharaoh loses greatly, and I guess God doesn't like ugly. But if that's not enough of a story parable for you, let's take it to the grasshopper and the aunt. In this case, Sarah Ann Murato is the aunt, and her designing the plan with the budget is being prepared. And if we're not prepared, we're going to look like the grasshopper, and what does that look like? And what does that look like? That's homes sliding off of the earth because of the landslides. That's garbage and blight in our towns and communities. That is the constant smell of urine all over downtown because of the unhoused. So, like, some of us are actually living in this nightmare that we can actively change. I definitely want to address folks like Bob Macy, who expressed straight out that he doesn't approve or support the millage increase. And I see what he's doing with his language there. He's trying to separate the tax from the budget, and that's not going to work because the people at home heard me, and you're all hearing me. There's no difference between the tax millage and the budget, so we can't split it, and you're not going to keep your seat for next year. Whatever happened to having leaders like Franklin D. Roosevelt, who risked his presidency in support of the New Deal? It was an unpopular proposal at the time, but did he care? No, because Americans were suffering, and he felt in his heart that it would be worth the risk. And I ask the handful of councilmen and councilwomen, where does your heart lie? Are you brave enough to serve your last term for the greater good of the community? If your answer is no, then your ego is too large to fit in Allegheny County, and you should resign before you and Evilly voted out. We need leadership based on merit and not based on bottom lines. I am tired of watching my county decay into a pit of despair. The schools are falling apart, and there isn't enough staff to support the youth. The parks and the park staff are diminishing. The allure of downtown is fading away with every urine-soaked block. Correctional officers are committing suicide rates at higher than the national average. This is Pittsburgh. It's not New York or Chicago. They shouldn't be committing suicide. It's wild.
Next, we have, please line up in order, Julian, Darla, Ashley, Maggie, Laura, finally, Emily, Mark. Okay, I'm going to read a couple more names. Cornelius, Andrew, Keisha, Sarah.
All right. Hi there. My name is Laura Chweens. I am a resident of District 11 in Park Place. I am also a property owner and the Executive Director of Pittsburghers for Public Transit. I'm here to support the proposed 2.2 millage increase proposed by the county executive. So, over the last six years, we've been organizing for transit fare relief for low-income households that who are participating in SNAPs. Thousands of riders, households, service providers, advocates have signed petitions, made public testimony, rallied in the streets, done impactful participatory research laying out the ridership and cost benefits. We know that people are making impossible choices between critical needs, to ration between food and healthcare and jobs and childcare and more because of the cost of transit fares. And after many years of advocacy, DHS stepped up. They ran a pilot program looking at funding affordable low-income fare program, which is now the permanent program that county executive Inomorato announced and was implemented in June this year called Allegheny Go. Affordable access to public transit is preventative healthcare. It is hunger prevention. It's a workforce program. It's an education support program. It is the physical manifestation of the concept of access to all critical needs. And I'm just going to assume that you all wouldn't dare cutting, cut funding for transit, which, like DHS, leverages local match to access six times as much funding at the state level. We've already lost 20% of our transit service over the last four years of the pandemic, and should we lose more, our region's transportation infrastructure frankly will cease to function. So, I wanted to say that, but frankly, I want to say this. I am appalled that we have to be here today. I have a six- and an eight-year-old, and I already don't have enough time that I can spend with them. The people in this room that have spent hours here are probably some of the most overextended people in this county. How dare you make all of these heroes come out and speak up to justify their jobs to elected officials who don't appear to be doing theirs? I think it is shameful and cowardly for council members to claim that they are opposed to the millage increase and that they wouldn't cut critical services and jobs when there is no other proposal on the table. That is not a position that is a lie. I suppose you don't want a tax increase on your, to happen on your watch, and I also, the idea that we are not only allowing, but amplifying or preempting the cuts that we know are coming at a federal level is extraordinarily insane to me. I, instead, instead of having a tax increase on your watch, you will, what you will have on your head is with your ambivalence and your failure to fund the budget and close the deficit through the millage increase is the collapse of our county services across food, healthcare, education, childcare, transportation, public safety, and more. And so, I ask, is that the legacy you want to be remembered for? Thank you.
Hello. My name is Starla Sherlock, and I work for Beverly's PGH, formerly known as Beverly's Birthdays. Beverly's PGH services over 40,000 children and families each year. On behalf of Beverly's PGH, I'm here to urge you to save our services and invest 2.2. I am personally a property owner of Allegheny County, and I live in Baldwin Borough, District 6. I've worked in social services in Allegheny County for the entire of my career. Currently at Beverly's PGH, we partner with over 150 social service entities, many from you have heard from today, or you will hear from. I like to tell you more about people, because I believe in investing in people, not places. I like to tell you about two people our organization has served in Allegheny County. Their names are Baby Jackson and Bee. Baby Jackson resides in District 9 and is now 11 months old. Jackson's mother Bee reached out to our organization while expecting her first child, Jackson, in November of 2023. At this time, Bee was not connected to any other service providers in Allegheny County and was not receiving any prenatal care. She was in her third trimester. To give clarity on the magnitude of her not receiving prenatal care at this time, most mothers have met with a medical provider up to 12 to 14 times by this time in their pregnancy. Bee is a woman of color, and in Allegheny County, this makes her 2.5 times more likely to experience a fetal death. Bee attended one of our free community baby showers, where she was connected to a room full of other providers who are social service entities that are in this room. Due to this, when Baby Jackson was born, he was connected to our agency as well as an Allegheny County Family Center. Baby Jackson received a year of Cheerbox from our agency that contains critical baby care items. We distribute an average of 4,200 of these in Allegheny County each year. When we were discussing eliminating specialized services for more than 1,600 at-risk families with new babies offered through the Hello Baby program, we were talking about families like Baby Jackson. When we discuss eliminating family centers, you eliminate the Greater Pittsburgh Infant Formula Bank, which Beverly PGH, my organization, I oversee, a program that has fed over 3,000 unique babies to date, a program that has feedback from working and employed mothers that if our program did not exist, they would not be able to feed their children. A cut in our county funding would do devastating and a ripple effect to other providers we support all throughout southwestern PA. Imagine if it weren't there for Baby Jackson and his mother. I understand that a 2.2 increase would have had an effect on my personal finances as a property owner in Allegheny County. However, I believe in investing in people, not just places, and I'm asking you to do the same. Thank you.
My name is Emily Francis, and I am a resident of District 11. I am here this evening to urge you to vote yes to county executive's proposed budget and 2.2 mill increase. While I am a resident, I am also speaking to you today as the Director of the Greater Pittsburgh Nonprofit Partnership. This is a coalition that, over the last five years, has included over 500 nonprofit organizations, community partners, and members dedicated to building strong, resilient communities throughout southwest PA. Many of our members serve Allegheny County and are providers who have spoken here this evening, and you may notice that their remarks do not center the sustainability of their organizations. They continue to offer and push for services and continuity of services they provide to your constituents. Furthermore, they recognize that these individuals served by their organizations depend on the interconnected ecosystem of supports from others. An internal health program may help with prenatal care, and also, without family support services, these same families face significant barriers to long-term success. Behavioral health services are essential, and without housing assistance or emergency shelter, the outcomes for those in crisis diminish sharply. I have seen repeatedly that even when organizations' missions represent seemingly separate parts of the nonprofit ecosystem, they exist on the same continuum because they are serving the same individuals and the families in different and critical ways. Without this modest tax adjustment, thousands will lose access to family support centers, after-school programs, emergency shelter, and behavioral health services not covered by insurance or Medicaid. This will not only cause these organizations to suffer, but also have cascading effects for other service providers throughout the county and those they serve. The cost of inaction is not just measured in program closures, it is also measured in increased homelessness, preventable hospital visits, and diminished community trust in you as this occurs. A $15 monthly increase for the median homeowner is a small price to pay to safeguard the safety net that so many of us rely on, whether directly or indirectly. Many homeowners and future homeowners that you've heard from tonight have stated as such. If this is not passed, the need captured in the statistics providers have shared with you today do not go away. They will likely increase or multiply, and their ability to address them effectively will be diminished. The providers who are here are the experts on the communities that you serve as well, and their clients are your constituents. They are speaking to you directly. Thank you to Allegheny County Council for taking a posture of accepting counsel this evening and this critical issue, and from those in this room and those submitting comments, please show Allegheny County that you hear us, that you prioritize our people, and are invested in creating our shared future and not just hoping for it. Thank you.
Cornelius, Andrew, Keisha, Sarah? No? Okay. Allison Keating, Elise McDonald, Eddie Carpio, Andrea, I know somebody spoke for her earlier, Monica Wheeler Hannah, James Hannah? No one yet? All right. Lizetta Cox, Ted Hess, Amaja Hall, Ann Gill.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lizetta Cox. I am an Allegheny County resident and a homeowner, and I reside in District 7 in Pin Hills. I am also the Executive Director of People's Oakland. People's Oakland is an organization that provides services to adults living with chronic severe mental illness and co-occurring disorders. We are based in Council District 10. Today, I'm here to urge you to support the proposed 2.2 mill tax increase. This increase is critical for the continuation of services that support some of the community's most vulnerable individuals. Without it, we face significant cuts to essential programs that are the lifeline for so many. For organizations like People's Oakland, these cuts are not just numbers on a budget. They are real-life consequences that impact the health, safety, and well-being of the people that we serve. Imagine a person living with severe mental illness, finally stabilizing with the support services, suddenly losing access to those services due to funding cuts, or staff already stretched so thin, being forced to reduce hours or lose their jobs, leaving the people who depend on us without the care that they need. These aren't just hypothetical situations. These are the daily realities for the individuals we work with. For people who have nowhere else to turn, the consequences of losing these services can be life or death. People's Oakland is not alone in this effort. We are one of many provider agencies throughout Allegheny County, working together to deliver critical services to our neighbors in need. People's Oakland has been a trusted service provider in this community for 50 years. DHS funding directly supports our social rehabilitation program, our resource coordination services, our psychiatric rehabilitation program, our reentry services, and employment assistance program. Without this funding, we would not be able to continue to offer the level of care and the support that our members need and that they deserve. That's why we are all here today, standing alongside so many other agencies urging you to support the 2.2 mill tax increase. This increase is not just about balancing the budget again. It's about investing in the people who need it most and ensuring that the vital services continue without disruption. In closing, I ask you to stand with us, to stand with the families, the children, and the individuals, and the organizations that form the safety net for our community's most vulnerable residents. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Ted Hess?
My name is Ted Hess. I am a resident of District 10, and I'm here to voice my support for the budget proposed by Sarah Inomorato. I've spent the last several years working on the rental assistance programs for Allegheny County, beginning with ERAP, also known as the COVID Rental Assistance Program, and then that evolved into the Allegheny Housing Stabilization Collaborative, or ASK for Short, which consists of several Allegheny County organizations with the common goal of stabilizing housing for Allegheny County neighbors through rental assistance, or facing rental arrears through rental assistance. This program targets residents at higher risk of eviction. Since the conception of ERAP, we have helped stabilize over 22,000 households and counting, and this has been a blessing for both tenants as well as landlords. During my time working with ASK, I've worked at the Housing Stabilization Center, or HSC, here downtown. This is a public drop-in center for residents looking for rental assistance that don't necessarily have the means to navigate the systems online or who just need immediate assistance. Although the primary purpose of the HSC is to help with rental assistance apps, we also work with clients for other resources as well, some of which include resources for unhoused, resources for at-risk families with newborns, and resources for households in need of food, just to name a few. Although COVID funding is winding down, the need for assistance in the county is not. Through 2024, the HSC has seen an average of 579 clients per month. This is a 23% increase from 2023 when ASK launched, and this doesn't even include clients who go through other channels for assistance. COVID just showed what happens when tens of thousands of residents simultaneously experience a financial hardship, but a global pandemic is not the only crisis that can cause a financial burden. Whether it be a family emergency, falling ill, or any other crisis out of one's control, anyone can experience a financial hardship at any time, including the thousands of residents who live paycheck to paycheck in the county. This has always been the case, and this will always be the case, pandemic or not. In those instances, community resources may be the only lifeline available. As a resident of Allegheny County, I believe it's your responsibility to make sure all of our neighbors have the resources necessarily not only to survive, but to thrive and continue to help make us the vibrant community that I fell in love with, and your vote in favor of the budget is one way to do so. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
I want to thank everybody. This was a very civilized, great, oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
John was at the beginning. He missed his time.
Oh, and he missed his time. Okay, John, come on.
Hello. My name is John Hanahan. I promise I was number four on the list, but I was stuck in the line downstairs, so thank you all for being here still. As I said, I'm John Hanahan. I am a Northsider, a homeowner, and a resident of District 13. I'll keep it short. Don't do it. Don't be tempted by some needless austerity budget. Don't force your constituents to sacrifice the quality and the quantity of our county services solely, solely for the sake of saving your property-owning constituents 10 or 20 bucks a month. Don't leave those state matching funds on the table. Don't leave those federal matching funds on the table. Don't settle for anything less than 2.2.
Is there anyone else that was on the list earlier today that didn't get a chance to speak? Young lady?
Thank you. I'm on the seventh page, I think, so thank you for holding out there. Beth Foringer. I'm the Southwest Pennsylvania Coordinator with the Ceasefire PA Organization, Pennsylvania's leading gun violence prevention organization, creating safer communities here in Allegheny County as well as throughout the state. Gun violence is the leading cause of death for children in America. Here in Allegheny County, we've seen a significant reduction in gun violence in our communities. That's in large part due to the millions of dollars that the County Department of Human Services has invested, and local teams that interrupt violence, support at-risk youth, and treat those impacted in high-violence neighborhoods. You've already heard from so many of our credible messengers throughout the evening, those in the streets doing the work in their neighborhoods. I'm really proud to stand here and support them and to just ensure that their programming that is lifesaving can be sustained. That goes along with every single community service that we're That goes along with every single community service that we're gathered here to talk about. So all these hard-won gains and life-saving programs could be at risk due to an Allegheny County budget shortfall. With the Trump administration expected to cut federal funding for community violence intervention, these local dollars could literally be the difference between life and death for our neighbors and our broader sense of safety here in Allegheny County. The programs that receive this funding are doing remarkable, sorry, remarkable work as you've heard earlier today. They're providing cognitive behavioral therapy to people who have previously been incarcerated for violent offenses to give them the tools to better manage their emotions. They're also giving jobs and training to help those residents build a more stable, non-violent future. They're providing trauma-informed care to survivors of gun violence to prevent cycles of retaliation and promote healing. These efforts are working and they are why violence is significantly lower now than before these investments were made. Stripping away funding could lead to a spike in shootings. We've already heard from Allegheny County residents who are clear that they don't mind paying a little more in property taxes if it means saving the lives of their neighbors and making their community safer for their family. When you consider each homicide costs the system $17 million, it's a small price to pay. In the end, this investment will save the county money when this life-saving budget is passed. Thank you for your time. You're welcome.
Before I adjourn, I just want to thank everyone tonight for all your messages and your concerns, and this was a very, very well-behaved crowd tonight. We've had some, we've had some other evenings here that wasn't so, so nice and so easy. So thank you very much for all your cooperation and good luck. God bless.